This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Budget Planning Workshop Meeting for May 28, 2019. Prior to asking for approval of our agenda this evening, I just want to quickly outline this meeting tonight, which is a little different from our normal meetings for those of you that have attended or have watched it from home at the past. This was a special meeting put together solely around budget planning and designed to be in a workshop format, so that's why the room does look different than normal. We have no items on the agenda tonight for approval, but the expectation is we'll work through all the material around our current situation to work toward a budget to be proposed to the public later this month. For public comment, public comment will be a little bit different this evening. We will offer the opportunity for public comment in two different sessions. You'll see, or if you had the opportunity to take a look at the agenda, we're going to work through a number of informational-type issues, then we will offer a public comment portion, and then we're going to discuss a number of other options that we have available to us and offer a second public comment. So you're welcome to speak at either of those two public comment offerings when we get to that. When we do get to that, the framework around public comment will be the same as with a normal board meeting. Anyone who wishes to address the board is welcome to do so. We ask that you raise your hand and be recognized, step to the podium, give us your name and address, and hold your comments, your statement or questions to three minutes, please. You're also welcome to leave a comment or write out a comment. There are cards, blue cards, over on the table where agenda material is, and you're welcome to leave a question or a comment, and we will get back to you, you know, follow-up on that if you'd like to do that also. Okay, then, board, may we have approval of our agenda this evening, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marvin, seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we will kick off budget planning workshop work, and I will turn it over to Dr. McGowan to begin, please.
Thank you very much. So as you mentioned, tonight's plan is to take a look at the legal options for you to consider relative to revoting or adopting a contingency budget, review the feedback that we've received from the community through the thought exchange, open it up to public comment, then have an opportunity to walk through a budget planning workshop, which would include Lou reviewing the overview of debt service, property tax cap, and revenue assumptions, and then I'll review contingent budget item, line item reductions, and discuss the impact with directors, principals, and assistant superintendents, and thanks to all of them for joining us tonight up at the table. Then we can discuss options to reduce spending to a level resulting in an under-the-cap levy increase, assuming you sort of choose to do that. Again, open it up to public comment after a live discussion happens at the table, people may wish to also give feedback. We then have the option to take a recess at that point. The budget would not be developed specifically by board members in executive session, of course, that's done publicly. However, based on your feedback and given the time constraints, Lou and I would adjourn during a recess and work through any additions or changes to the proposal, and then come back and present them publicly to you with the community here. Certainly, that is, in some ways, a play-by-year depending on what happens through the course of the workshop and what you'd like us to do. And then we would reconvene to finalize our understandings of the budget proposal. There's no formal action for you to take, but just for us to understand as we leave here tonight exactly what the expectation is, so that we can make a proposal on Thursday night for your adoption. The time constraints are all prescribed very much by New York State law in this circumstance. So let's jump into that. The education law 2023 says the Board of Education can adopt a contingent budget when voters have refused to approve a budget. Law 2007, Ed. Law 2007 designates the third Tuesday in June for a budget revote, and a district may choose to adopt a contingency budget after a proposed budget is defeated once rather than have a revote. So you could do that. And if a budget is defeated twice, then the board must adopt a contingency budget. Must adopt a contingency budget. So really, there's three options. You could conduct a revote on the same budget proposal with the same proposed tax levy increase, conduct a revote on a revised budget proposal with a tax levy increase below the property tax levy limit increase, and frankly, anywhere along the spectrum, just revoting on a different proposal, or adopt without a vote a contingency or austerity budget requiring no increase to the tax levy from the previous year. So no increase to the tax levy at all would be a contingency budget, and we'll walk through what that would mean for the community if you chose to do that. Let's talk about the community feedback that we received. We did an exit poll and a post-budget exchange. So during the day, every voter leaving was asked if they wanted to complete an exit poll through the thought exchange format, and then we advertised that very evening in an email to the community following the vote, the opportunity to get on and give that type of feedback, and again on Thursday night in a follow-up email to the community about the next steps. We closed that poll on Friday at 5:00. The reason for that was to have time to analyze the results before this evening. Exit poll information, again, was shared through the community, social media, schoolie news, website, on the evening, and it was open until Friday. And links to the results will be shared following tonight's meeting in another update sent to the community so the community can access, as they could throughout the exchange, but in a variety of reporting mechanisms, see the way the comments were grouped and themed, and take a look at what we will be talking about tonight. We'll send that out to the community. What was the participation like? 865 participants, 471 shared thoughts, 408 rated thoughts, and 526 explored thoughts and went through them. There were 1,000 thoughts shared, receiving 45,000 star ratings across the board. So 1,000 different thoughts shared by our community members. And the question was, how do you feel about the proposed budget, and what influence your decision to support or not support the proposal? If you voted no, what changes would you suggest? The demographics broke down to 61% parent or caregivers, just 2% students, 10% staff members, and 27% were community members without children in the school. What were the top 10 comments for all participants? So we'll take a look at them grouped by the different demographic groups. The first, "There were no cuts to administrative positions." All the cuts were classroom positions. "I find it odd that we can cut teachers, but we cannot spare an administrator." And these are hard to read in small print, so it is in the packet in front of you as well. "We've been hearing for years how the state is violating the law and not providing Brighton with its proper aid. Go fix it, even if it means a suit." Please know that there are many who voted no this year who believe deeply in the quality of education and support of the work of BCSD. In fact, some of us risk so much financially to live in Brighton because of the education. Please don't assume a no vote is a vote against education. "Spend more time getting proper resources funding from Albany. We deserve our fair share. The district has been short over time. We should be given more equitable funding. We need stronger representatives in Albany who will fight for our share of funding." And again, participants rate these, one star being the least agreement, five stars being the most, and these were the top five. The second five of the top 10. "Turn up the heat on the state of New York to pay for what it pledged to Brighton. Equal distribution of funding. If Governor Cuomo is as concerned as he says about lowering taxes, he should be brought to task for not providing the funding the formula requires. The only way to avoid these proposals in the future is for the entire community to speak up, hold lawmakers accountable. On top of last year's tax reassessment, this is a lot to take. With this rise, would-be total $1,300 hike in town taxes since moving here three years ago. Trump federal cap on state and local taxes hurts high-tax municipalities since cannot write these off federal 1040. It's unfortunate that the state hasn't given us our fair share and that the state rules are such that we're penalized under these circumstances." Community members without children in school, just their top five comments. "Postponed full day kindergarten until state funding increases. Equal distribution of funding. We must fight for equal share of aid from the state of New York. We have been hearing for years how the state is violating the law and not providing Brighton with its proper aid. Go fix it, even if it means a suit. I voted against the budget. The budget should not be treated as a way to do everything, no matter the cost. Budgets aren't a shopping list of all desires, flexible, and amorphous. Budget should be rigid. Work within the constraints of the money available." "Property taxes are completely out of control. People do not have unlimited resources." And among parents and caregivers, "There were no cuts to administrative positions. All the cuts were to classroom positions. If Governor Cuomo is as concerned as he says about lowering taxes, he should be brought to task." This was the same comment from before. "Turn up the heat on the state of New York. In addition to requests for an increased tax levy, I want solutions as to how this will be approached in the future. How will Brighton change this?" What's to say this doesn't happen each time the district is eligible to recuse an overage in increased taxes? And please know that there are many who voted no this year who believe deeply in the quality of education. And again, this was a reminder that a vote no wasn't a vote against education. And among staff members, "I know that good, quality, well-rounded education is expensive and worth the investment. I support the budget because I know how impactful our programs are on students' lives. I voted yes. The district is amazing. I voted yes because I think the tax cap is artificial and does not reflect the lived reality of a district such as ours, and I want more local control of budgets. With state contribution, I'm willing to pay more in taxes in order to get the services we want and need. I hope the superintendent staff can reinforce the significance of key issues so that the budget can be passed in the next vote." Group A and Group B, and this is a common thought analysis tool, and what this does is take people who had similar patterns of starring comments and breaks them down into distinct groups to understand how they responded versus each other. So in other words, it takes two different, but in their group membership, like groups of people, and kind of gets a sense for how did they weigh in on particular thoughts. Group one, as we walk through some of these, was 71% parents or caregivers, 28% community members without children in school, just 1% student, 1% staff members. And Group B, on the right-hand side, the green group, parent or caregivers are 66%, 20% community member without children in school, 1% student, 13% staff members. These were thoughts where the two groups had pretty significant differences of opinion. So on the left-hand side, doubling the tax cap is asking too much. It's too much at any income level. Group A agreed with that, said yes. Doubling the tax cap is asking too much, and Group B rated that a 1 on average, a 1.2. In other words, they're very far apart. There was not a lot of ambivalence. It was either very strongly agreed or disagreed completely. This vote was not about education. It was about an out-of-touch district ignoring the economic reality of Brighton residents or refusing to rein in spending. Group A, 4.9; Group B, 1.3. "BCSD blew right through the New York State cap, and I could not support a 5% tax increase." Group A, 4.7; Group B, 1.3. "Brighton taxes are already obscenely high, and they should not be raised above the legal limit." Similar results as cut off on the screen. Again, close to 5 and right around 1. So not a lot of ambivalence between those two groups. On the right-hand side, Group B rated these items in a positive way. "Full support. We want a revote. This is ultimately about our children, all our children. Thank you, Dr. McGowan and school leaders, for your courage. I voted yes because no political statement or financial sacrifice is more important than our children in the future. This budget was fiscally sound." Group B agreed; Group A did not. "I feel the proposed budget should be passed for the future of our schools." Group B agreed; Group A did not. "I voted for it. I trust the board asks for what is needed. I trust in the ability of the Board of Education and its superintendent." Group B agreed; Group A did not. These were the items that the two groups agreed on. Their ratings were much closer. "They seem to agree there are no cuts to administrative positions. All the cuts were classroom positions, and I find it odd that we can cut teachers, but we cannot spare an administrator. If Governor Cuomo is as concerned as he says about lowering taxes, he should be brought to task for not providing the funding the formula requires. The only way to avoid these proposals in the future is for the entire community to speak up, hold lawmakers accountable." Group A, 4.2; Group B, 4.6. "We have been hearing for years how the state is violating the law and not providing Brighton with its proper aid. Go fix it, even if it means a suit." Group A and Group B agreed quite a bit on that. And agreed in a low manner, so disagreeing. In other words, they were on the same page rating these thoughts low. "After voting, I realized I only filled in circles for the two proposals on one side of the ballot. I overlooked the section where you vote for the budget. I support the budget and inadvertently didn't vote for it because of how it was set up on the ballot. I'm sorry. I wonder if this happened to others." And people generally seem to disagree with that. "I didn't vote on Tuesday despite the explanations. I did not feel that I understood short- and long-term repercussions of the property tax increase." Both groups rated that low. "At 73 p.m., there was quite a line to vote, though it did move fairly quickly. Voting should occur only during normal November election days." People seem to not agree with that. Themes also emerged. Among the thousand comments, they could be broken down into these groups. On the left-hand side, very clearly, people were saying to us that taxes were high, many comments in the state funding area, exceeding the tax cap was problematic, and the tax increase was significant. I'm sorry, taxes already being high, state funding problems, exceeding the tax cap, the tax increase being significant. On the other side, much lower ratings around supporting the budget, voting yes, and essentially educational comments in the budget where it was. People were not as concerned about property values as they were about taxes being high. Again, that's on the other end. When people receive this report, they receive in the form of these being themed tiles. They can hover over those tiles, click on them, and see the exact comments that are categorized in each of those areas, and the board has, of course, received that as well. At the end of the day, though, the takeaways are this. People feel that taxes are too high. I don't think that anybody at this table or in this room disagrees with that. That the increase was too high. 4.89 was too high, and the community made that very clear in this vote. Going over the cap is a significant concern for people. That's why we did not get over 60%. Many people feel that they can't afford the increase. Reassessments, the property values in our town being reassessed, played a far larger role than we anticipated, and federal tax policy was also concerned. This came up in many, many comments, more so than we have heard before up until this time. We had not actually received a lot of that feedback. We did this time. People are supportive of quality, and they wanted to support it, but it was just too much. Be transparent. Don't use scare tactics. Need to see sacrifices made. Live within your means. Get the state aid situation figured out, but don't use that as an excuse and put that back on taxpayers. These are all thoughts. Again, people can come to their own conclusions. You've received this information. This is my report back to you on what I read in the comments, these items right here. Okay. Next step in the process is we're going to pause right there, give an opportunity for public comment, and then we'll begin the workshop format with Lou's presentation of the debt service slides and the long-term expenditure forecast.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Then, again, now, we'll offer an opportunity now for public comment. This will be the first opportunity, and again, we'll offer a second opportunity after we go through the next phase of our workshopping of all the data and some of the recommendations. So again, I remind folks, public comment, I ask you to raise your hand and be recognized, step to the podium, give us your name and your address, keep your comments to three minutes, please. One other item, I just do want to remind you that comments or statements about specific individuals or specific students are inappropriate and won't be allowed. So just please be careful about that. Is there anyone who wishes to address the group this evening or make a comment? Yes, in the back? Yeah, please, if you would, come up to the podium. Thank you. That way, we are on television, we are streaming. Our seventh board member, Christina, is at a conference in DC, but she's that laptop over there, so we've got everybody here, so.
Hi, Christina.
All right. So hi, my name's Rachel Remmel. I'm a resident in the district. I had a couple comments, some of which were related somewhere. One is that I hate thought exchange. I think it's a terrible way to get community feedback. I used to fill out the surveys. I don't like this format. It is not a good way of capturing the actual number of people responding, and it also, when you're rating each other's comments, you don't have to actually, like, rank choices and do other kinds of things that you can capture through a survey. So I don't think that you get great data out of this, and I think you miss a lot of people. You might do both and not just one or the other. Another thing I would like to say is I'd really like to see some discussion tonight of how whatever we do this year will affect next year's budget, because I know there's a lot of things out of this year's budget that, in terms of reimbursement for the capital projects and other kinds of things that relate to state aid, whatever we decide this year is going to have an impact on what we do next year, and I'd like to have that be made explicit to the community. The third thing I'd like to say is I really think that increased messaging to the community and starting the process of engaging the state much sooner and engaging the community much sooner could have had an impact this year, and I hope that that process will start sooner next year, in the sense that if you are communicating with the community about the impact of the state, the ways that we need to engage Albany and so forth, starting now for next year's budget cycle, then you have educated the community, organized the community, people understand what's happening, and they have a chance then, when they get to the budget, to make a much more informed choice. They're already organized. The community already knows what's going to happen and what the options are and how state things factor into that, and also the timeline for state lobbying can't be eight weeks or six weeks or whatever. It has to be a much longer process and needs to engage the whole community. So those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Anyone else who wishes to speak at this point in time? Anyone now? You're welcome this time, or you can wait till later, so, or just listen and soak it all in. That's fine, too. All right, seeing that we have no further comment right at this point, why don't we, then, Dr. McGowan, turn our attention to the next steps? And we welcome Mr. Lou Alimo, our Assistant Superintendent of Administration.
Good evening. My objective is just to bring forth some more detail about the capital project, the impact of the capital project, and I want to start with the discussion that we've been having for the last couple of years that starts before the 2017 approval of the capital project. So this is a slide, and if I get too technical, please stop me or have me try to say it a different way. What we started with, and this is what has been almost a blessing and a curse for the district, we've had the opportunity to pay cash for projects on an annual basis, $1.5 million capital project. We have also benefited from reorganization incentive aid when we consolidated the middle school decades ago. So our position up until now and into the recent future will be that we're receiving more state aid than we have debt on the books, and we have more capital investment. So we've been talking as a board and administration about how to close this gap. I'd like to use a pointer.
That clicker does have.
Got it. Okay. So right here, we have the debt is right here, and we have our building aid is above here, and this is the impact on the local levy. So what we've been trying to do over the last several years is to repurpose this building aid for capital to avoid any future impacts on the tax levy. So over the course of the years, last few years, we've been able to build up $500,000 in that. So we've been chunking away at it, trying to plan to close that gap. With the constraints of the tax cap, the pressure to levy new taxes has been difficult, and we have not been able to close that gap through these years. So again, before the 2017 capital project, we knew we were going to face some challenges going forward, and that as that reorganization incentive aid started to wean off and the debt comes off and the aid associated with that debt comes off, we knew we were going to be looking at future tax increases to rebalance that and repurpose that levy. So if you recall, the years where there was the gap elimination adjustment and there was decreases in state aid, we were benefiting from that additional building aid, and it was essentially re earmarked to support program. We're at the point right now where, again, that aid is weaning off, and we have to shift that burden back to the local tax levy, and that's all coming due within the next couple of years. So again, before the 2017 project, we knew we were going to have a shift in the tax levy of 0.6%, 1%, 0.3%, and 0.4%. So unlike a mortgage, we have bonds. So bonds mature at different rates and at different, that's why you see some staggering of the debt. So our plan with the 2017, now insert the capital project, and what we were saying throughout the course of this budget development process, let's fund the BFIP project is the acronym for, the 2017 capital project. Let's fund that in this budget, and that was a major part of us proposing a budget over the tax cap, so that way we can deal with this phenomenon in the out years. So the point was, if we pay for it this year, then we wouldn't have to compound going into the future years, and we can reshift that property tax levy from program back to our capital obligations. So this is something that we're working on the plan, anyway, we've been working on it years, trying to close that gap, trying to stabilize the impact of that shift in revenue sources to pay for the capital investment. So then with the 2017 capital project, this is a chart, and I apologize for the audience members, it's too small. So we have the debt in blue, and you can see how that's going to ramp up. We've been working with our financial consultants on prudently planning the debt. So we look at our cash flow for our capital project, and we only want to issue the debt that we need for a period of time, and we know we could avoid more interest than we're going to pay on bond issuance costs. So we're very careful about timing those debts based on the cash flow in the project. But ultimately, we're going to be ramping up, and we're going to have all the debt issued for the capital project. That's in the blue. So you can see, to your point, what's going to happen in our next year. You're going to see our expenditures increase at a greater percentage as the debt comes up. Now, how are we going to pay for that debt is the next several. So the building aid piece of it is in the bright orange. So we don't receive any building aid until the capital project is substantially complete. Now, with the Council Rock project, because of the complexity of that, we expect to get an early aid release. So we'll get some of that money upfront, but that's going to wean in over time, and we won't be able to receive aid for the high school project, for instance, until we finalize that cost report, and then the aid is amortized. So we're trying to do our best and spread out our cash outflows with the future inflows. So you see that with the state aid piece of it, and you see how it ramps up over the last couple of years. And then this amount here is the net levy, which is symbolized in the gray. So you can see our levy here, and then it goes up. Now, there's a gap here because of issuance costs. We've had a savings account in our debt service fund to fund that. So we're prepared for that. We were not going to levy any more taxes next year to fund the 2017 capital project. We had to have, we could rely on a one-shot revenue, and then we could rely on the state aid in the next year, once we finished our cost reports, and then the net impact on the local levy was there. An option that is for the board's consideration today is to better spread out the financing of that capital project. So you see what our budget was intended to be with the yellowish-orangeish. Sorry, I'm somewhat colorblind. So they're there. So we wanted to create a stable plan with the budget intact, again, closing this gap in year two. If we're not going to fully fund the 2017 capital project, that pushes out what the mortgage is going to be, and so we'll have a jump going into the 2021 budget, essentially just more pay-as-you-go with the financing costs. So we'll have to look at financing strategies, but that pushes the burden out to future budgets, and then we achieve that stability with this particular project, matching the inflows with the outflows, and having that, as Dr. McGowan always uses the analogy, the car payment. The car payment then is in the budget, and we can manage that with future projects and leverage our capital reserves. So in future projects, we'll maximize this state aid. As you recall, the Council Rock project is not 100% eligible for aid, so there's more burden on the local tax levy than on the projects that are within the bond ratio, it's called. So that car payment then, as debt comes off, will have reinvestment, so that car payment will be steady in the foreseeable future. I hope I didn't, please let me stop there and see if I can answer any questions related to the thought process in developing the initial proposed budget and what the option that the board will have, the opportunity to discuss as far as deferring some of this capital to future years. The other option is talking about the capital reserve and not maintaining that for investment, but if you use that as a short-term financing source, there's some risk to doing that, and you're relying on a savings account then for a recurring expenditure, but there is assets there available in the short term. That's something that the board can discuss. We were asking to draw down $3 million from the capital reserve because of the construction overages, and so we can complete the full scope of work. That was the proposition that was on the ballot, but that is an, just to be transparent, that is an asset that the district owns, specifically earmarked by the voters for capital projects. So again, I'll pause there and see if I can answer any technical questions.
Lou, the only, if we were to utilize further withdrawals from the capital reserve fund, though, then we've got to deal, because of the length of the project encompassing all four buildings, we're going to have to then deal with that in a different way in the next couple of years out on the other projects in terms of some of the planning that we had done to utilize the capital reserve fund.
Correct. So our ability to replenish that reserve is going to be limited as we tighten up the margins. What it has the immediate opportunity to do is if you look at the debt piece of it, it could, you know, paying more cash towards the project would reduce our borrowing and interest costs in our bond anticipation notes. So we could just spread that out until the aid comes due. Either way, you have to wean yourself off of it when the revenues are not going to get any greater once state aid starts flowing.
But there will still be projects we may need to undertake for which we would use cash from the capital reserves. Do we put those in jeopardy then, those garden variety projects that need to happen every year when it comes to maintenance and repair?
It's, I mean, it's a savings account, so, I'm sorry. So there is, I mean, it's a finite use for it if we don't have a plan to specifically replenish that, and with the pressure on the tax levy, it would be very difficult. Obviously, if you look at the first one, we weren't able to close that gap over these last several years in anticipation of the 2017. So to have a specific plan that's going to require tax dollars to replenish that tax levy is difficult to do with the tax cap parameters and with the inherent structural deficit that, you know, revenues and expenditures that we'll talk about in future slides.
Okay. All right, thanks. We'll be back to that shortly after we get more of this information. Folks, I'm going to -- I see you waving hands. This is a workshop meeting. Much of the detail we're hearing for the first time right now, so we will provide an opportunity for public comment in another section after we go through some of this initial section, unless there was something else that you were raising your hands about.
I just had a question about someone.
Yeah, hold that, please, and we will get to -- I promise you, we'll get to anything anybody wants to ask, okay?
There are curves there, too, if you want to -- so we don't lose it if you ask.
It's very hard to hear.
We don't have the audio on up top? Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. I didn't realize that. Thank you. To the extent that we can turn it up a little bit without getting feedback, let's try that.
I'm not really witty right now.
But if it's more than helps, when you're wavering down before, then you're far away from them, he can't hear you as well.
So when I'm nervously fidgeting, that's not good.
Here's what I will offer also. The slides that Lou is pointing to are in the packets, but because we're going to have to get back to this as we continue to try to craft a budget, so essentially, what we're talking about right now is the component of the budget that we originally proposed that involves starting to pay debt service next year. So what we're talking about essentially is extending that out and adjusting that to the point where we can get by next year at a lower rate, but then we're going to have to do some mechanizations moving forward with the debt service, either extending out or trying to manage the capital reserve fund a little bit, and we're going to talk a little bit more in detail about that tonight while we're here. So I apologize, I didn't realize that you couldn't hear that well in the back corner.
So the second piece of that is the impact that debt and building aid have on the tax cap calculations. So we've talked about, again, that intent to fully fund the 2017 project. I apologize, this is small, but hopefully you can read it better in your packets. So this year, our tax cap number is 2.34%. Next year, the way the state requires us to calculate our tax cap, it looks at all building aid, it looks at all debt, and it looks at capital expenditures, and there's an exclusion amount for projects that were voted by the voters, approved by the voters, excuse me. So our tax cap projections then, with the capital project debt, not anticipating any other exclusions that are allowed under the law, would be 2.34% this year for 2020. 21 would be 4.32%. Then it drops back down to 2022, it'd be 2.39%, 2.36%, 2.54%, and 2.1%. So part of the plan and part of what we talked about in one of the presentations were if we were over the cap in 2020 at the 4.89%, we would fully fund that 2017 capital project. We would then stay under the cap less at around 3% is what we presented at the time going into '21, 3% into 2022, and we'd have some carryover to stabilize it over the next couple of years. So we would fund the impact, we would have some room to fund the other impact of the state aid, the pre-2017, and we would also have some cap space to build in and finish funding the full-day kindergarten program. So that was the thought. That's what we talked about as part of the advantages of exceeding the cap this year. Changing that then, this is the cap that looking and paying as you go, these would be the cap percentages going forward. So next year, the cap would allow for 4.32%. The rebate program is fully funded, or it's fully phased in, excuse me, the tax cap rebate program, but now that's an annual decision for the state legislature. So they could cancel that program at any time. They may not, though, so we didn't know that information going forward. We're assuming it's going to stay in. So we had a question from a community member. Why didn't you wait until next year when that was fully phased in, and it may go away? We weren't prepared for that hedge, to make that argument, to say the rebate may be going away anyway, and we have to wait and still try to stay within the cap this year when we knew we had the interest coming on. So that's the tax cap forecasts for the next several years that play into our long-term operating projections. So those presented, one of the tools that we use for long-term forecasting or multi-year forecasting allows us to put in our budget information and then set high-level assumptions going forward. So what this slide is showing, excuse me, is showing what my best guess is to what our revenue projections are going to be going forward, given the tax cap format. So the blue is the tax cap as calculated using the state's formula. With the orange, orangy color here, is the state aid, so that represents about 20% of our budget. 50% of that is based on reimbursable expenses. 10% approximately is our foundation aid. So I took some educated guesses as to what I think our spending is going to go up in our reimbursable aid categories. So I think I have a pretty good idea if the state continues to honor those specific formulas, and then I applied, you know, a 3% to 4% increase in foundation aid. That's a guess. It's an absolute guess whether that's going to go up. The governor said he's going to limit spending, overall spending, to 4%, but our experience has been is that the reimbursable aids are eating up a larger percentage of that and not as great a percentage as going to foundation aid. And the fact that they keep changing the formula each year makes that 10% very, very difficult to project using any type of trend data. So those are 70% and 20% of our revenues. We have other recurring revenues in the gray. The biggest components of that are sales tax, which I estimate a nominal growth, 2% to 3% based on recent economic factors, and then services paid to others. So we have the 10 private and parochial schools that are in Brighton. We provide health services and special education services to those. We bill back other districts, so that's a revenue source. It's also on the spending side of it. So we factor in an incremental cost for that as well. So that's where I see, again, my best estimate as to where I think revenues are heading over the next several years. Then on the expense side, that's the red bar here, I see our expenses, which, no surprise, based on every budget conversation, I see our expenses increasing at a rate greater than our revenues. So this doesn't assume that we close the gap this year, so not closing a gap obviously compounds over the next several years and what our projected spending is going to be, factoring in our capital investment, factoring in trends in contractual expenses, rate adjustments, things like that, try to go through by function, by object. What I think is our best educated guess is what the incremental cost will be over the next several years. So to the point earlier, and we definitely have a structural deficit, about $1 million each year. I'll pause there again for any questions. So this then shows what my assumptions are, and I say mine because this is -- I own this. I'm working in a tool, and I'm putting in -- this wasn't a collaborative for the communities. This is my best guess, that assumption's not building a committee, a budget committee, or anything like that. It's what I think is going to happen based on recent trends. So we build in, starting from the top down to the bottom, 2020 going down to 2025. The debt will be phased in. We look at our salary and benefit drivers, which are over 70% of our budget. So we look at salaries, wages, we look at health insurance, giving our recent trends and our move to a self-insured health insurance plan. You assume a 6% medical inflation rate there. Retirement and payroll taxes, that's a function of your salary, so as your salaries go up, pension contribution rates stay relatively stable. Those are set by the state. Those would go up incrementally as wages go up. Our BOSIs, core services that are BOSIs-related, typically they pass on their inflationary cost adjustments to us, usually ranging from 2% to 4% is what's passed along. I looked at special education and what our trends have been, and if we continue to experience increases in enrollment, you know, what the cost may be for that. Now, there is an offsetting revenue on an excess cost aid, but it is an expense driver that we need to consider. And then transportation has a contractual inflationary adjustment. So these are our cost drivers that were reflected in the previous slide. Any questions on that or the high-level forecast?
Lou, just quickly, the state aid on your tax cap and revenue assumption chart. The state aid chunk increased beginning in 2022. Most of that really is attributable to reimbursement for the building project.
The building, correct.
Yeah. And one of the things I just remind everybody in the room is to try to put together a projection. This is -- and I understand this, we've heard from a lot of the members of the community going back years, not only in this current budget season, but one of the most frustrating things in attempting to run a school district in New York State is that orange bar, the state aid issue. Because, all due respect to Lou, that's a shot in the dark. We don't know for certain until January-ish, when the governor releases his budget and the aid runs go, what that really looks like. It varies all over the place. There's really no predictability to it, no reliability to it. We know we're shorted by the formula, but what it actually is in numbers coming to us in the foundation aid, the critical piece for operation, we really don't know. So you have to make assumptions like we have been all along, all districts do it. But I can tell you this, all New York State school districts are being driven along that same line that you see with that deficit number, which is why Albany and the current Senate and Assembly majorities, both now being the Democratic Party, are working to try to completely change the funding formula. So not only are we working with trying to work on our shortfall continually, but in a current environment where the entirety of education funding in New York State is being questioned and looked at. You know, we point to the foundation aid formula, that's not followed, but that whole thing could be in the mix of change over the next few years. So the conundrum of where that revenue is coming from, and then I point out to everybody the number in blue, the really disproportionate and inappropriate number that falls to local property taxpayers, and has for years. So we have to work with these numbers because those are the numbers we have, and it's the best project that we can put forward, but it's just, I point out to folks that trying to figure out that number that's in orange and what it really will be, and then what that gap really will be, is really hard beyond one year. So, anyway. Next.
Okay. So for those at home that can see the presentation, it will be up on the screen, the list that we're walking through. For those in the audience, if you don't have a hard copy, it'll be helpful because the print is very small and it's hard to see, it's a long list of items. And for those at the table, if you have the spreadsheet that was distributed, that's the easiest thing to look at, or look on the hard copy. But the point of this next portion of the meeting is to walk through every single item that would be reduced in a contingent budget. So the contingent budget being, again, just by definition, the tax levy cannot be raised a penny, and so it means the most significant reductions, and that happens automatically if a second proposed budget is not passed, or if the board would opt to move ahead with just a contingent budget and not look at a revised proposal. The format for the discussion is to go through every item and ask the particular budget maker or leader in that area to speak to the impact, just from their perspective, what the impact would be, and for board members to have an opportunity to ask a question if they have a question about that, about short-term impact, long-term impact, whatever it is about that particular item, and hopefully we can answer that or get you more information if you need that in more of a workshop format and have a discussion through those things. So it'll sound formal as we go through each one, but certainly there can be as much discussion as we want. To be very clear to the people here tonight and anybody who is watching, the intent of walking through every item is not to say these items are all being cut. It's for the community to understand what would happen if there's a contingent budget, and for the board to understand what that choice of going to a contingent budget would mean, and then if you choose to have us revise our proposal to walk through after that what those items could be and how we could make adjustments to contingent budget reductions to create a revised budget proposal to the community. Any questions about format or what's being presented? After we walk through each of those items in the contingent budget, and then talk about potential items for a revised budget, if you so choose to do that, then we'll pause again for community feedback and community comment. Ready? The first item on the list is deferring the debt service. I'm going to ask -- I'll go through four items in a row, and then just ask Lou to speak to those four items. The first is deferring the debt service by reducing what was proposed in the first budget by $300,000. The second, reducing our full-day K planning by $60,000. The third, reducing our furniture expenditure by $100,000. And the fourth, reducing our equipment expenditures by $200,000. Lou, can you just speak to what the impact would be? We grouped those in future budget challenge. If you could just describe that, that would be great.
Sure. We've talked about the impact of the debt service, so we can do our best to manage, you know, how that debt is brought on. At some point, though, it is a mortgage payment that the board will have to finance. Deferring it does compound with the other reality that we have other building aids dropping off. So it is a decision of deferring it and paying for it in future budgets. The full-day K, what we've been planning to do, the board has been planning to do, is we've been adding, to the extent we could, positions over the last three budgets since the capital project. So we have in the proposed budget about $900,000 of full-day K. The thought was we would budget each year, so when we go live with full-day K, we wouldn't be levying any more taxes. We would try to have a stable increase and fully fund the program without a spike. Deferring that creates the opportunity for a spike if the goal is still to go live in September of 2021. Furniture, we have been running pilot programs. Over the last three years, we've been trying to build up that furniture line item, the capital piece of it that we've been building up to offset that line chart that I showed before. Part of that has been reinvested in furniture, 21st century furniture, and instead of our standard repair replacement reserve within the budget for classroom furniture, we've been investing in 21st century pilot furniture. This would essentially wipe that out, and we would start over with building a baseline into our operating budget. With equipment, this would essentially adopt the legal rules of an austerity budget. It would only maintain equipment to preserve current program or health and safety of students. So this is about a 50% reduction in the equipment, and all the budget program managers would have to make the argument that the equipment that's purchased is essential for one of the three reasons, and the other one that I missed is preservation of assets. So there'd have to be -- essentially, that would get wiped out, and everyone would have to make their appeal as to why that's essential for program, health and safety, or preservation of assets.
Any discussion or questions, clarifications we can provide on any of those items?
Lou, does furniture include equipping Council Rock when those classrooms are completed, or is that in the capital budget?
What the plan was for that is the full-day K incentive aid, we're going to use that as a one-shot revenue to match the one-shot outfitting of the furniture, so we're not borrowing for that. We're going to use that state aid. That way, we're not relying on that revenue source that has a finite life to reoccurring expenses.
Is that one-time aid, is that over a two-year period now?
Yeah, I think it's three. So it's descending. So we'll capture as much as we can. So we may have to appropriate some in the first year to make sure it's here, and then we'll replenish that with the full-day K the year that we go live.
If we put up not a contingent, if we put up another budget, are the two propositions going to show up on that, too?
Yes.
We'll get to that, but yeah, they have to be revoted on again, yes.
But the contingency budget would not have...
No. If the board adopted just a contingency budget and did not revoke, then the two propositions would not be voted.
They would be gone for this year.
I just want to be clear about that.
And just to clarify, we would be deferring the debt service payment completely, or would we make some payment?
We would still establish a base, so this would be that $300,000 that would -- out of that commitment of this is what we need to fully fund that net levy impact. So we'd still have more than the minimum interest in there. So we'd still be getting ahead a little bit, so I guess I should have disclosed that. I mean, the board could cut that maybe another $200,000, but that just...
That seems like an unwise decision to me. Just overall, that's my personal feeling.
It is, just, I mean, it's still a little bit overbudgeted by less than $200,000 from, again, we're guessing what the interest rate is going to be when we issue that short-term debt, so we're trusting that our financial consultant is being conservative with that number, so... But yes, that is, just spreads it out even further.
Foreign language, grade six. Foreign language, grade six. Mr. Thomas, that would be $120,000 reduction, so that's two teaching positions, and we put it in the category of a student experience, reduction in impact on student experience. Could you speak to that, please?
Sixth grade language is part of a three-year world language experience currently. Reducing sixth grade would condense that experience into seventh and eighth grade, and which culminates in eighth grade with a Regents Level One credit exam that propels them into high school at the second level. About 90% of the kids that are in sixth grade are taking sixth grade.
And how many would they take? Without us, we don't know that.
Depending on the year, this year, it's probably about 270 students.
Any questions about foreign language, world language, sixth grade?
Did Rob say that that would, this is Christina, did Rob say that that would be a reduction in two actual teaching positions?
Yes, that's two teaching positions.
Okay.
Any other question on world language? Grade four instrumental music would be a $70,000 reduction. That's an approximate due to both the teaching positions, but then the need to cover also planning time that those periods are used for. Grade four instrumental music, Mike Leener, can you speak to that, please?
Thank you, Dr. McGowan. Fourth grade instrumental music is a program that would impact every child in the fourth grade, with 98% of our students participate in fourth grade instrumental music. It would shorten their experience by a year over their entire careers, and would diminish their experience in the ensembles. This is the setting where not only do kids learn how to read music and play an instrument, but a lot of the soft skills are enhanced at this time. This is where students learn the value of grit, discipline, and hard work, and teamwork, and how their efforts contribute to a greater good. They learn how to listen to and play off of each other, and build confidence at a very early age that accelerates their learning later in life. They have opportunities for practicing responsible risk-taking and self-reflection, and they are making connections to all of their curriculum areas in language, math, science, and history through their study of music. If we were to eliminate this part of our program, we would not feel it right away. It would not be something that would impact us next year, but we would see a progressive change in the culture and in the experience around music education for kids all the way through their experience. As I reflect on this, one of the big points of pride for our community is, for 10 years, we've been selected by a national organization as a best community for supporting music education. It's been a 10-year occurrence. This has always been a point of pride for our community, and it all starts in the fourth grade instrumental music program.
How many positions?
That would be two positions.
And would they, they would push off their ensemble experiences to sixth grade, or would they still do that in fifth grade?
It would start in fifth grade, so fifth grade would be the beginning, yes.
No, in terms of like playing in band? They would still play in band in fifth grade?
Okay. Any other questions? Let's move to literacy coaches and instructional coaches. That would be a reduction, literacy coaches, again, in a contingency budget of $120,000, and instructional coaches of $300,000, both reductions support for continuous instructional improvement, the category that we've put that in. And Dr. Baker, if you could speak to that particular program, please.
Absolutely. So our instructional coaches are responsible for, I would say, I don't know, all of our professional development, definitely all of our embedded professional development of our teaching staff. And what that really has provided us with, an opportunity to, you know, make sure that our teachers are up on not only pedagogical skills, you know, within the classroom, specific strategies, but as you all know, the state has changed the standards now, again, for the third time, in ELA and math, science a year ago, social studies two years ago, foreign language is getting ready to change. And our coaches are really responsible for leading those conversations alongside our teachers, to not only determine what those changes are going to mean for our classrooms and what our students and what they're going to be learning, but then they're there to directly support that work in an ongoing fashion. One of our instructional coaches, actually, we have now three that support the technology and really have assisted the teachers in learning to use the technology, learning to use it in the best way possible. The two literacy coaches, Kevin, as you mentioned, are directly responsible for our K2 and our 3-5 early literacy programs, and really looking to assist teachers in being the best reading teachers that they can, and again, thinking about, you know, the demands of the new standards and the new pedagogies, you know, expect. They're there to support the teachers and to learn in a job-embedded fashion.
Any questions about the coaching positions?
Debbie, you mentioned two literacy coaches and three with regard to instructional technology. There are math...
Yep, we have, right now, a literacy coach at K2, a literacy coach at 3-5, an MST, a mass science technology coach at K2, a mass science technology coach at 3-5. We also have a 612 instructional technology coach, supporting those teachers. We have an assessment coach, which is a .6, 2.4 math at 6-8 and at the high school, and then one ELA and one 612 science. So for a total of about eight FTEs.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Two areas that we'd like Carolyn Rabidou to please comment on, our CPSC position, the Committee on Preschool Education, and the Family Navigator position. The Committee on Preschool Education chairperson is a $20,000 expenditure, and we think that impacts customer service. And the Family Navigator position, which is a $60,000 budget item, also impacting the student experience and mental health support. If you could just speak to both of those, the impact of that reduction in a contingent budget.
The CPSC position is a mandated service, so that's something we need to continue to have. We need to have those CPSC meetings. That's for children ages three to five in our preschool system, and that's something we have to work with the county to provide for all of our students in Brighton who have, who are identified as students with disabilities before they enter school. So we would continue to do that, but you may see a decrease in the personal service. It would have to be a more centralized service and a more centralized process that would come out of central office, rather than having that one person as a point person. And then our Family Navigator, that is something that has helped families connect to mental health services in our schools and in the community, and that is a service we would not be providing without our Family Navigator. She also has worked with some of our students on individual counseling, so that those services would go back to the building level and the counselors that we currently have in the building to ensure that our kids get a good opportunities.
Any question on either one of those reductions or programs?
So, both of those positions, that work still needs to be done, and we would simply be asking people to do more, to do more then.
Correct.
Right, okay.
You know, so one aspect, the Family Navigator position has been able to increase our service to families relative to mental health, and our philosophy and feeling has been that it is both needed and impactful on the student experience pretty significantly relative to their achievement, because just overall, their achievement as a human being, and balance in their life and in their mental health. However, is it mandated service? Is it something that is required either through an IEP or through the Regular Education Part 100 regulations? No. The CPSC position is also for us a position that provides families with much more customer service, a direct contact, faster contact, a better response, often that person that can help walk a family through, you know, a very difficult period of time for them as they're working through the preschool special education process, but that will still be provided, just at a different level. And I would say the Family Navigator services have been very helpful, and they've improved our performance in that area and our service to families. We will still support families, just can't at the depth that that position could. Any other questions on either one of those items? Security staff, Lou, if you could speak to that, please? That's a reduction of $30,000, and we certainly think an impact on the ability for us to expand the program.
So the proposed budget added three security positions, so we could standardize the model with the front door security, and then as well as the rover outside eyes and ears model. We would expand that to each of the three schools, middle school, French Road, and Council Rock. This would eliminate two of those positions. We still would need to add one position, at least during the course of construction, at Council Rock, because of the construction moving to the front of the building. So this would eliminate the new positions at French Road and at the middle school, and it would require a reorganization within, possibly within the high school security staffing.
The next item I'll speak to, the additional funding for the diversity equity position. It is currently funded in the budget at the consultant rate that we have worked through this year. We had hoped to add to that and expand the position to a .4, equivalent of a .4 position, and we would say that under this contingent budget, we would not be able to fund that addition and expansion of the program. Dr. Washington has been very successful in connecting with families, in connecting families to us, better into working with many of our departments and staff members relative to being much more culturally responsive, and thinking about the best ways we can work with all families in our community and providing us with that support. But we would not be able to expand that, but keep it where it is right now, not expanding the program. Questions about that? Matt Tappin, if you could speak to a class size reduction at K2 in a contingent budget of one position, what the impact would be?
Sure. So at kindergarten, with the current projections that we have, that would put our numbers about 19 or 20 students per class. A reduction at first grade would put us at about 24, and a reduction at second grade would put us at about 24 to 25. And I think just the impact is on students, especially kindergarten, but kindergarten through second grade, the recommendation always is the lower class size and the lower class ratio to teacher ratio provide students with what they need, so.
Thank you. Dr. O, if you could speak to the same, if there was a reduction at 3-5?
Very similar to Council Rock, the, a reduction in staff member at French Road would put our third grade up to 25 or 26 students in a classroom, fourth grade up to 25 or 24, and fifth also up to 25 or 24. So increasing the class ratio just by quite a bit, and similar to Council Rock, but just having a lower ratio is, works best for students. Teachers are able to meet more of the needs of kids in the classroom and spend more individualized attention with each student.
Any questions for Dr. O? Mr. Thomas, six through eight, class size reduction.
Similar to Council Rock and French Road, our class sizes fluctuate in middle school because we try to hold our teams in a high priority. It's a core belief in middle-level education, is a teaming philosophy. So as the student enrollment increases and decreases, we've tried to maintain the same staffing, which will vary class sizes from 20 to 25. So this reduction would force the teams to break up and push the enrollment to that 25, 26 figure in the classes.
Questions for Mr. Thomas?
So Rob, under this contingency, all the team teaching arrangement would be broken apart?
It would depend on the enrollment at that grade level. At some grade levels, you couldn't reduce the teams where there is more room to reduce, it would break up those teams at that grade level. Where they would teach combination grade levels or combination teams at a grade level.
So it's individually specific, depending upon that?
They agree, yeah.
All right, thank you.
And Dr. Hall, if you could speak to elective reduction, one position and a class size reduction, one position at the high school, please?
Sure. We probably wouldn't have a one-point-on reduction in any one particular area, probably hit all of our different electives based on the numbers that we're seeing right now, but certainly it'd be fewer options for students to have. We have a lot more scheduling conflicts with singleton courses versus having a couple of options, a couple of sections for students, a lot less choice for coursework and interests to be met with the elective reductions. For class size, certainly fewer opportunities, I think, at the high school level with longer-term or longer-written assignments, probably be fewer longer-written assignments given to students, less one-on-one feedback, individual instruction, attention would certainly diminish. And as Rob said, anywhere, depending on the reductions where they were made, we might increase up to 25 or 26 students a class.
Questions for Dr. Hall? Lou, could you please speak to a Buildings and Grounds Department restructuring, a $25,000 reduction?
So when our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Doug Eckert, retired, we flattened out the department and created a working supervisor leadership team. We've been holding money for more of an administrative position, really, we've been piling it for the last couple of years. This would eliminate substantially all of that funding. What we've seen with this, while it's an effective model, we're very reactionary as a Buildings and Grounds team right now, maintaining that funding. The plan was to invest that in an expediter-type position and a more proactive facilities planning position, or restructuring of certain to, instead of the working supervisor repurpose that, so it just limits our ability to be able to restructure and to meet the long-term facility planning needs.
Any questions on that?
Is this exacerbated by adding to the Buildings and Grounds, obviously moving to a full day K, it expands the footprint a little bit in the population? Does this deficiency get worse in a larger environment?
Yes. My professional opinion, it would. And it's not so much the addition of square footage at Council Rock, it's the, all the work that we're doing is about a third of what was in the building condition survey. So it's, where I see the consequence for this reduction is the facilities planning and the next level of prioritizing our capital projects, not necessarily break fix, but proactively planning in that, energy education.
Providing some of that stuff as well.
Correct.
Field trips would also be reduced in a contingent budget by $10,000. Matt Nelson, if you could speak to that impact on the student experience?
Sure. I think over the last several years, we've looked at field trips and evaluated which ones were the most impactful. Specifically, I think it counts Rock. Each class has one field trip experience that we pay for, however, we really looked at technology as providing some of that. However, there just can't be a replacement for the experiences that are hands-on, that leave campus and, you know, provide that practice for their learning. So it would have an impact on every kid at Council Rock, I think, and French Road, too.
Yep, similar at French Road. Our field trips are connected to our curriculum, so the field trips that we fund for students to attend are ones that tie directly into some of the learning that happens, whether it's in social studies or science typically in the classroom, but that would just be an experience that kids wouldn't be able to have that's hands-on and many times real-life for kids.
Questions about field trips? Athletic program assistance, Nate, can you speak to that, please?
Yep. This is in reference to a lot of our programs that have multiple coaches due to larger teams, encouraging participation from students trying out sports at any given level. We are fortunate enough to have assistance for certain programs, and we would have to examine and come up with a process to look at which of those we would have to cut in this scenario. Obviously, it would have a direct impact on kids' relationships. A lot of those assistants are the ones that student athletes connect to, and we are always encouraging that on the sports field, and the kids take risks and develop those relationships, so it would have a direct impact on them. And so we would have some tough decisions as to, you know, where we would go, and of course, we would look at, you know, where it would have the least amount of effect on kids.
Questions about the program assistance at all? The next two items I'd ask Dr. Baker to speak to, the Assistant Director of Humanities position and restructuring or reducing the elementary summer program.
So, currently, our Assistant Director of Communities really provides leadership for, and oversight for all our social studies and ELA work, K8, and then foreign language, 612. A loss of this position not only would, you know, obviously do away with that leadership, this person also is a literacy expert, so she works really hard not only bringing literacy... This person also is a literacy expert, so she works really hard not only bringing literacy to our ELA teachers and kind of the latest research, but also within the literacy in the other core areas, your social studies, your sciences, really looking to embed those practices and providing leadership for that. In addition, sitting on regional committees, statewide committees to make sure that Brighton is, our practices are aligned, that we have the latest information about what's coming down from the state is also a large part of this position. As far as the elementary summer programming, this really specifically for those of you that aren't aware, this is really our summer reading program for students for grades K-5. We really target our neediest students. And obviously, the loss would just really increase the likelihood of summer reading loss. That's one of the key targets of this program, a key goal of this program is to mitigate summer reading loss between June and September. And we've been able to show in the past that we've been able to do that and we will be able to do that with this in this program.
Questions for Dr. Baker?
If it were to happen that that cut would have to be made, would we anticipate trying to mitigate in some other way? I mean, I guess the only thing we would do is end up naturally working deeper, further during your regular school year, right, with certain students?
During regular school year, absolutely. We may, you know, in the future, be able to kind of repurpose to see how we might provide for those students in a different sort of way. But I think for the short term, it would mean trying to make up for that either in the fall or...
Catch up almost, try, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And so this discussion, though, is if we're at a contingency budget, right? So that if we don't decide, if we decide to just follow our spending this year. So this, so far for me, this is the program that is the most important to save. And so if we were to consider going out with another budget, this would be a high priority for me. I cannot imagine cutting the support we need for our most vulnerable youngest students.
I guess I want a clarification. This is contingency. If we went out with something at or bold cap...
We're going to get there.
Yeah, but no, I know that. I know that. But that means that some of that would be restored.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah. We're going to get to that. The impacts there will be the next section, yes.
I get it, I get it.
Any other question on summer program? Tom, can you please speak to the reduction of a high school assistant principal and the impact that would have?
Yep. Basically, I mean, a lot of it is fewer opportunities to work with kids proactively instead of reacting to situations and discipline things, mental health-related issues. Each assistant principal probably gained a little over 100 students each compared to what they have now. Certainly fewer opportunities for one-on-one interactions, that one-on-one relationship. We'd be dividing up duties of four people into three and certainly would diminish opportunities for, to conduct lead department work, which they all oversee departments now and probably more managerial and not a lot of specific work for the department to be done as they can, more not.
Okay. Questions about that? The next two items are, for Lou to speak to, additional retirement, breakage and the videographer position?
I probably referred you for the videographer position, but the additional breakage, that's not necessarily a contingency budget item. It's as we learn about retirements, making budget adjustments. So that you're likely going to see in any new scenario, any new scenario going forward. It's a matter of taking it now or capturing it for future budget. It's all that, what's the impact on next year's budget the year after?
Sure, and I'll speak to the videographer position. This is an area that would be difficult in the sense that definitely an enhanced form of communication for us using more video, both in communicating to families about the work that we are doing, documenting the work that kids are doing, but also promoting the kids of work they're doing and have them communicate with their families about their experiences. We see that now happening, in fact, during the school day and a wide variety of ways that our videographers capturing that learning and helping kids really enhance through a variety of different projects. And using their work and their experiences as this raw material, as we know kids now are doing, using their experience and their imagination as raw material to present through video. And Eric Greener's been really essential in helping capture that for our families and help our community understand the great work that's happening during the day as well. Any question about the videographer position or breakage? I'll also speak to the private parochial transportation, non-school days. This is one that we've talked about before, bless you. When we are not in session here at Brighton, so we're required to provide transportation to private parochial schools, to our resident students to go to those schools, but only on the days when we are in session. But there's quite a bit of fluctuation for students attending private parochial schools that are observing particular holidays that we are not or who do not observe holidays that we do observe here in the district. So there's kind of fluctuation in the days and the cost to our district is about $50,000 per year. However, what we've said in the past is that many of our community members who are sending their kids to private parochial schools by their choice are also not able to take advantage of very many services here through the school district. So there's the concept of certainly, they benefit from having an educated citizenry. They benefit from the value of having a strong public school district. But in terms of direct ability to take advantage of services, this is one of the very few places where our families, our non-public families can take advantage of a school district service. And so we've tried to support that, also knowing that it would impact their educational experience if their schools, who cannot be open on certain holidays, were closed on those holidays and the holidays when we weren't transporting, given that some of our transportation services to a majority of students in those schools, and they would likely not be able to hold session on those days without that transportation. So that particular cost is something that would be required for us to reduce in all likelihood in a contingent budget, but we would not advocate that otherwise. Questions about that? Extended studies programming. If Matt, Elson, Rob could speak to the impact of eliminating extended studies programming at the K-8 level?
Sure. I'll start with the K-2 level. At Council Rock, we have a building-wide extended studies model, so each child benefits from it. Classroom lessons are taught within each classroom, K-1 and 2. We've been focusing on habits of mind, as the board knows, but really focused on different thinking and enrichment, extended thinking. And then they are also, my two teachers who equal one whole, are also able to be supports for teachers in terms of differentiation and then providing exploration of interests along with aptitude as students grow through first and second grade.
At the intermediate level, we look at extended studies a little bit different in that we identify kids who are needing some extra support, or extra enhancement, rather, in what they're learning in the classroom. So we have, we use extended studies as a service during our wind time, but many, many students qualify for enrichment, really in the humanities, ELA, social studies and some science, not in the realm of math typically unless a student has an interest project in that. But our groups have specific projects that they focus on for enhancement, but also our extended studies teacher might pull a separate group to work with a classroom teacher around something that students were interested in. She works sometimes even one-on-one with students who need some extra enrichment in a particular area for just portions of the school year. It's not every student in the building, but it's certainly a lot of students. And it helps us push our student learners to explore other topics, to enhance their learning, to whatever their need is for work there.
At the middle school, almost 200 students in the three grade levels, between 60 and 70 per grade level, are in an extended studies class, which is part of our extended studies program. It's highly capable, motivated students doing a lot of independent, self-guided work, taking an activity and making it their own through corporations they build, stock marketing, creating different projects throughout the year of their interests led by a teacher. Turns out it's about three sections per grade level.
Thank you. Questions from anybody regarding extended studies reduction, contingent project? So I looked down at non-mandated transportation supervision and skipped several items between that and private parochial transportation, so I apologize. I'm going to go back to ask Dr. Baker to speak to professional development travel conference, reduction of $50,000.
This is the monies that we use to target professional development for our staff that our coaches either aren't able to support. This year, we used some of this money to hire the diversity and equity consultant that has worked with our staff on some curriculum reform. We've sent teachers to AP workshops, to statewide conferences with this money. And obviously, a cut would then necessitate us not, or not allow us to do that. There are other, you know, we can offset those funds perhaps by some grant funds, but there's never a count, you know, we can't ever count on that and how much money we're going to get back from the state or from the federal government, so.
Continuing education, Lou? That's a reduction of $15,000.
To support the program, we added clerical staff to assist in the business office functions of continuing education and also facility use and scheduling. So that's being absorbed by the general fund right now. Under this proposal, it would, or under a contingent budget, that would shift back to the community education fund, which is in the F fund from an accounting standpoint. And the revenue would need to be made up within the program, whether it's through administrative fees or it would be through a fee-based model to absorb that cost.
Questions about that? Dr. Hall, clubs and activities at the high school, a reduction of $15,000 to the total budget?
Sure. While we don't have a list of which clubs or activities would be reduced, obviously there would be a lot less choice for students to get up to that $15,000 mark, which would predominantly be the stipends for those clubs. Fewer opportunities to meet individual student interest and needs and depending on what is reduced, possibly reduce service to the school community overall.
Okay. Nate, modified teams?
Yep. Looking at the figure we might be cutting here, we would be looking at approximately studying a cut of three teams at the modified level. This would be our seventh and eighth grade programs. And this is such a crucial time for kids to be active and out there. This is, at most times, first experience for interscholastic athletics. And, you know, obviously, we would have, we would put together a process again for which of those teams we would look to eliminate.
Thank you. Questions about modified teams?
So sometimes we get suggestions from the community about some things, whether it's field trips, athletic program assistance, clubs and activities or modified teams, that we should adopt a pay-for-play because they're not core to the academic program.
It's not legal.
That creates, I understand, that creates some equity issues, but there's also some legal rules. I'm not sure everybody understands that that's not legal, so I just think that's something we should talk about for a second. That has come to me already.
Great. To the question in the comments, it is illegal in the state of New York to have pay-for-play. We're not allowed to collect fees. People make the argument, well, you do for trips and you do for other things. There are certain activities where, you know, if kids are paying for their experience to go on a foreign language, for example, or they're buying a T-shirt for an activity, but you can't charge a specific user fee to participate in sports or activities. It is against the law to do that in the state of New York. There are other neighboring states that do that. Massachusetts would be one. It certainly creates an equity issue also, only accessible by those that can afford it. Either way, it is against the law. The difference, I would say, too, while we're talking about that, is that when people say, well, kids can play those sports in other places, in clubs or in travel teams, et cetera, the cost for those is exceptional and often cost prohibitive. And we know that kids engage in activities, the same argument around visual performing arts activities, that to engage in those outside of the school environment is inequitable. It's a cost issue for families. And that we know that needs to greater success for kids, greater engagement, more opportunities. And frankly, on just the soft side, that's an experience that kids cannot get back and get another opportunity to participate in. Thank you. Non-mandated transportation supervision, Lou?
So over the course of the last couple of years, years, we've added eye full-time monitors and we continue to support bus supervision with teaching assistance. This would have a strict, adopt a strict policy where there's only a second adult on the bus under mandate through an IEP or some type of 504 plan. So it would be less adult supervision on our buses, which may lead to a higher bus suspension rate.
So in other words, when students have difficulty in terms of behavior on the bus and we're assigning somebody for a safety reason, we would instead be saying to parents that they're not able to ride the bus until such time as they don't need that supervision? Okay. Questions on that? Matt, Elson, Rob, if, I'm sorry, we did already speak to extended studies. Don't need to do it again. Let's get back to you. Summer school, nine through 12. Dr. Baker, if you could speak to that, please?
Absolutely. So every summer, we have about 100 students at the high school, grades nine through 12, who participate, I guess is the word, in summer school. Our high school summer school program is designed around credit recovery. So these are for students who have failed a class, who have failed to get the credit and need that summer school experience in order to maintain on track. I think it's really important that you understand that losing this program, albeit it's a non-mandated program by the state, would have a direct impact on our graduation rate because there are students for whom this is how they graduate.
And just so everybody understands, I think this is, we don't charge for this. But if this were eliminated and kids needed to go to a, another summer school experience, they would have to pay for it.
No.
No?
No, they can't. They could. So we would, they would not have that experience.
Okay. Let's be clear.
Question. Dr. Hall, if you could speak to any AMC staff reduction, please?
Sure. So our AIM program is our alternative high school, which we run at the high school. It's a high school within the high school. If we reduce staff, we would certainly create a lot less flexibility within the program for schedules to be met, reducing sections of certain courses, students having to take a particular class at a certain given time, higher class sizes, fewer opportunities for elective choices. And kids will have to take courses, again, at a given period which might conflict with EMCC, which several of our students run, too. So there's definitely going to be less flexibility within the program compared to what it is right now for some of our most needy high school students.
Questions about that reduction? Dr. Baker, foreign language interns?
Yes, so right now, we host foreign language interns for each one of our languages, Spanish, French and German. These are native speaking individuals who come in, they work directly with teachers, they work directly with students, really enhancing their cultural awareness and their understanding of the language. They give a lot of language practice, direct language practice to our students and really, I think, provide a service to them that really helps them truly, by the time the students are up through the high school, really have a deep knowledge of the language and what that sounds like and looks like in a native country. Without them, our students would not have this kind of experience. And these interns actually work all, with all of our students in language, grades six through 12.
Thank you. Questions on that? The next two, Dr. Hall, if you could speak to clerical position at the high school and computer aid position as well?
Right, so we'd potentially reduce one clerical position in the high school main office. Obviously, that would lead to less individual attention that we would be able to give to our constituent groups from students, parents and the faculty, splitting up duties among the existing three that would remain, everybody sharing the load of that one particular person, just overall customer service type stuff. Our computer aid, lucky for us, that we'll have ninth through 11th grade students will have their own laptop devices next year. But our seniors, who will not, would frequently go to the lab. We have an open lab all day long for students to go to. We'd have to shut that down unless there was a staff member there. So it would mainly have an impact on our seniors who would need access to computers during the day and just wouldn't be able to get into a lab without them being open.
Thank you. Questions on any of those? Questions on either one of those reductions? The next two, Lou, if you could speak to the chargeback of the technical theater manager and facility use fees for gyms, grass fields, and rents?
So the first one would be, we employ a 12-month technical leader manager. This would essentially be charging back the summer performing arts and other outside groups for the summer salary for that. So there would certainly be a consequence either in through additional fees or required fundraising of some level. It's a revenue shift, not necessarily a cut in service, it's just a revenue shift to more of a fee-based, fee-based service. That would be the same with the facility use for gyms and grass fields. Right now, we, under our policy, any youth recreation sport is not charged a fee unless there's a direct cost, like, for instance, the lights. We would apply a minimum use fee for that to cover overhead charges. So again, it's more of a revenue fee-based budget balancer as opposed to reduction in services.
Well, the only other one, which I would comment on, unless anybody has any questions on either one of those. So that would impact youth leagues from CYO to Bright Little League to Stormers to every one of those groups, outside groups, scouts, everybody would.
Anybody that uses a facility or a room or gym.
Any committee groups, any committee meeting other than the school-based.
Part of that is prescribed, I'm sorry to interrupt, that part of that is prescribed by law. We're charging a fixed rate.
If we want the contingency, you have to do that, yeah.
Substitute teacher coverage, a reduction of $15,000 is essentially in alignment with the professional development change, people being out of the classroom less, we would reduce the budget then for substitute teacher coverage, also less coverage for people to complete necessary assessments, et cetera, which really maximizes instructional time when there's a substitute working with students. Instead, some of those assessments would have to be conducted while students are in the room, which decreases the amount of instructional focus that happens then while that's happening. Questions about those?
I assume that would also affect committee work during the school day, too.
Correct. Absolutely. So to present, or to move ahead with a contingent budget would require reducing expenditures, again, because the inability to levy any additional taxes, by $2,555,5431. This list is $2,580,000. So we'd have essentially almost $25,000, $24,569 to the good, to readjust where necessary. But that would be a comprehensive list of reductions that would need to be made. Now, this is not meant to be a decision point necessarily, or to take a vote, but just generally to ask the board, what are your feelings on a contingent budget without going out to revote, instead just moving ahead with a contingent budget? Is that something you'd like to opt to do, or do you want us to walk through what a revote would look like and what that option is?
I would like to walk through the revote.
Yeah. I am definitely not in favor of just going completely to a contingency budget without a revote.
Okay.
Yeah, I think absolutely, we've talked about this a little bit, starting right after Tuesday night last week, and I think the point is, we have to clearly define for ourselves and the community what it would mean if we failed another budget vote. And that would be, we've outlined that pretty clearly. Painful, it's not, it's not a pretty situation, but it would be something that would have to be done, and now it's been defined pretty clearly. I mean, adjustments could always be made slightly, but it is what it is. So I think going to the next step now, in terms of what alternatives we have in a budget that we do want to go out to vote for on the 18th, and that's where we are now.
I think it's important to point out, at this point in the discussion, to, to the point that was made about scare tactics, because if we don't give detail, sometimes relative to specific teams or clubs or what will happen, we're accused of not giving enough information for people to vote on, and then when we do, people feel as though those are scare tactics. This kind of discussion, and what might seem to some as less passionate, vigorous defense of each person's program, was really a dispassionate just retelling of what the impact is, and a report from each of the people closest to that on what the impact would be. Not to be mistaken for people not willing to defend their program, this group of people the administrators have reported to you would stay here all night to defend any one of the people involved or the programs involved. The reality is, they were not asked to do that, they were asked to simply report to you what the impact was. So I want to make sure that that's clear to the community, people watching, and to everybody at this table, that the people here would, all night long, defend every one of these items, but in the interest of simply reporting the facts to you, not creating a scare tactic and not creating, whoever has the loudest voice, the program stays, we're asked to give you essentially just what the impact would be. But it should also be clear to the community that every one of these items will be cut in a contingent budget. I want to say that again. This is the list that will be cut. That is not a scare tactic, that is what the reality is. A contingent budget will include all of these items.
Well, and we're on a different road now. It's, there's a clarity to what our work is in front of us. There's a budget, this is the budget, unless we come up with an idea that presented to the voters on the 18th receives voter approval.
So to that point, I'm going to walk you through what could be done differently in each of those lines, and then we can discuss making adjustments even from there, but here would be an alternative way to look at it. So up on the screen, and then in front of you in your packet, also in the next pages. Our suggestion would be to continue deferring the debt service by $300,000. That that, to us, is not the ideal financial plan, or we would have presented that in the first place, but that that, given the fact that we would like to save program as much as possible in the circumstances, what we would recommend. There's an overarching theme in the next several items and in the discussion to be had. That is, that these are items that, yes, could have been presented in the first place. They were not, because they were not the ideal financial plan as presented to the community. Also, the financial plan presented to the community was decided by the community to not be the ideal financial plan. So understanding that that's the feedback. So what I've, the example I've used with many of you is, if you've gone to a financial advisor that says you should put this much away for college and this much away for this and retirement, this much, and that is unrealistic in your household budget, you might say, thank you for that advice, I can't afford that, I'd rather not do that, and you might ostensibly vote no to that financial advisor. The financial advisors for the district, essentially this group and through our process, in studying this over several months, presented a financial plan to our community that we thought made the most sense, for the reasons that we've outlined. Respectfully, and I mean this, this is not frustration, this is acknowledging that the community decided something different. That was not the financial plan that we're best for our community. We're hearing that, we're accepting that and saying, then let's think through what could be the next steps, being respectful of democracy and the fact that people voted differently than what we had presented. So the first item, the deferring the debt service, is that, is key to that. But again, these next several items. Full-day kindergarten, we would suggest in this spending plan, if we do a revised budget, and when I say revised, I say under the cap revised. We would not suggest going back out at that number, being respectful of the community feedback, and we would say, it seems clear to us that the community is saying, be under the cap. So to be under the cap, we would use $220,000 of what I would refer to as a set aside for full-day kindergarten, the money that has been put there for positions for full-day kindergarten in fall of 2021, September of 2021. Use that, reduce that by $220,000, but utilize that to pay for other programs, and we'll detail those programs. So to avoid cuts, the contingent budget cuts of foreign language in grade six, grade four, instrumental music, we would suggest using the money that's been a set aside for full-day kindergarten. The problem is, and the reason why we did not propose this originally, that will have to be refunded come 2021. That will have to be refunded. So what does that mean? That means that we're saying today, use that money to fund the program next year, but that we will have to reduce in next year's budget either world language in sixth grade, or instrumental music in fourth grade, or a variety of other programs. But essentially, we are scheduling now with the community, those will be reduced, not this year, not with a month left in the school year, not without additional time to plan, but we would suggest the ethical moral choice is to say, if money is there, utilize that to preserve that program for an additional year while more plans can be made, and while we continue to fight poverty for additional aid. So this is assuming nothing changes, right? This gives a one-year refund to those programs, but that full-day K money will need to be refunded then, at that time period.
And could I interrupt you for a moment? This makes the basic assumption that we are going to stay firm in our commitment to start full-day kindergarten in September of 2021.
Correct.
We're not going to, you know, we're not going to.
No, and I would point out, that is certainly a discussion that could be had in, not in this timeframe, between now and a vote on June 18th, but in a full-blown budget process. My warning to you would be going into that conversation, that we have clearly outlined for the community, a timeline of 2021, which has a significant impact on people's plans and their family, number one.
That's true.
But also, we're talking about debt service and a significant construction project to be able to have full-day kindergarten. This entire, other than the other challenges around aid, et cetera, but the debt service issue and capital project issue, not entirely because we're doing work in every building, but a significant portion of the work is being done at Council Rock to revitalize ability, but to add full-day kindergarten. And it would seem disingenuous to our promise to the community, when we went out and they voted in 2017 on our project, to start kindergarten in fall of 2021, to change that. Now, again, in a, in a longer budget process, in, as we work towards next year, that's a discussion you could certainly have, but at this point, we would say that money would need to be refunded for 2021. And what would have to happen then in lieu of that is a reduction of world language and instrumental music at fourth grade. Likewise, the furniture line and the equipment line, that we mentioned reductions in the contingent budget of $100,000 to $200,000, we would recommend $100,000 to $194,000, just slight fluctuation there. But again, that would need to be refunded, that money has to go back in at some point, and it would need to be refunded. It could be used now to support program, but that means we will reduce programs in 2021 or '21, '22, if nothing else changes. An additional program, I mentioned foreign language in grade six and grade four and instrumental music, we would suggest keeping those now, and scheduling them for reduction next year or the year after.
By next year, you mean 20, 2021?
My apologies. In next year's budget plan, 2021, or the 21, '22 budget, when these other lines have to be refunded. The next item, in a similar fashion, would be the literacy coach positions and the instructional coach positions. The first, the literacy coach positions would be reduced 2021 or '21, '22. In a revised budget proposal for June 18th, we would suggest reducing funding for the instructional coaches by $100,000, which would be one of the positions, and recoding $40,000 of the positions to a title grant. Yes?
So recoding one of those positions to a title grant, how assured are we of that grant money going forward past this one year?
We're not.
Okay. So that, that's simply just another reprieve?
Exactly. That's a reprieve, but that is, and that will require a reduction in a future budget year, should funding not be obtained for that or continued. The CPSC position, we would recommend continuing that reduction, $20,000, that would be a change in service, but we would recommend that. The family navigator position, we would recommend reducing that as well. What we have planned, if we reduce that, is to cover that through an administrative reorganization. So this is not per se administrative cut in this year's budget. I'll speak to both of those in several items down the list. It is the reorganization and adding those duties to an existing administrator and moving to administrators within the team to cover those duties. That's essentially taking what was planned to be a full-time job and adding that to the already full-time job of an administrator, and essentially a reduction in service overall, picking up additional duties. But a reduction in administrative service transferred to the family navigator position will somebody in the group who has an expertise in that area as well. It is not, again, there always people will say, well, then why didn't you do it in the first place? Because it is not the ideal way to deliver that service. That's the reality.
Kids need that service.
Correct. But it is a way that we can still provide some of that service, just in a different way, while reorganizing administratively, which is something certainly that we received feedback from the community on. Our security staff, we would suggest not completing the additional staffing at Front Road, but hiring at Council Rock, in particular, in the secondary position, especially with the construction that Lou mentioned with regard to the reduction in the first place, and that would be happening at Council Rock. So that is limiting the expansion of that program, but we still think from a health and safety perspective, we should do that. The additional funding for the diversity equity position, we would not recommend continuing with the additional funding and reduce that, that $20,000. That would mean continuing with what is currently being offered with Dr. Washington, again, very impactful, and we would suggest continuing with that, but not expanding the program beyond where it is right now. We would recommend that the class size reductions, K2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12, and the elective reduction, 9, 12, not be taken out of this revised budget. That again, we use those other funds in the budget to not make those reductions this year, clearly saying to the community, we will need to make that reduction in 2021 or '21, '22, but that those positions going into next year will remain. Again, we can keep program for next year, but the long-term implication of the budget decision made by the community is that we will need to make those reductions going forward unless funding changes.
Clarification, we did, we did reduce in this year's budget.
Right. So I think this is important to clarify, though, because there is an impression that people seem to have that several teachers were reduced. Teachers currently teaching were not reduced. The projections, there was one small reduction of, at the secondary level, in terms of people who are currently in the system and in the district. What most of the teacher reductions that were reported in the budget materials were, were projected positions for enrollment, for additional electives, for additional programming that was part of the preliminary budget, that we reduced from the preliminary budget, but they were never people currently, other than the very minor reduction at the secondary level, but they weren't, of course, not minor to that person, but they weren't people that were being laid off then, which is really important to point out. But we would suggest going forward, if we think about those class size numbers mentioned by our principals, that would have a significant impact on our instructional program, and we would not recommend making that, that change. However, again, if funding doesn't change, then we will need to make those reductions next year or the year after. We would choose with all of these, a progressive reduction over time between each of these areas.
Can I come back to, I thought, just a question. The additional funding for D and E, for diversity and equity position, that means we can't, we wouldn't expand the program, it would stay as it is?
Correct.
Okay. And we would still have a consultant?
Correct.
Okay. Just want everybody to be clear on that.
That's a good question. Billings and grounds, the permanent restructuring, we would suggest continuing with that reduction by $25,000. Field trips, we would suggest not reducing field trips. Again, that $10,000 expenditure, we would suggest is important to students and we would like to maintain them.
And could I just say quickly, because it was touched on over here by our principals, we have spent probably 10 years or so, really critically, and I give everyone credit involved in this, really critically looking at those field trip allocations and how we've used them, and I think each of you pointed out to making sure they're academically relevant and they're experienced for students. I mean, there was a time when there were three or four times the number of field trips in this budget than, that we currently have. So I give credit for reductions that have passed and taken in that area to make it better for us right now, to make sure that what is there is relevant to the work that's being done.
And again, that falls in the pay-to-play. We can't charge families for field trips.
Correct. Well, there's certain things, like the DC trip is different, but I'm just saying what they, what they described earlier.
Right. He's co-curred our.
Right.
The athletic program assistance, we would suggest reducing that by $20,000, that all of these are, there's certainly an impact to students and to athletes, but given the situation, that's a reduction we would say we should make. Assistant Director of Humanities, our suggestion would be that we reduce the funding for the position by $40,000 charged to a grant, but not reduce that position in next year's budget, and review that for reduction in a future budget likely in next year's. But that currently, again, while we know that funding exists in the grant going into next year, that we fund half the position with that, half the fund on the general fund, which is why the reduction would be $40,000 from the proposed budget. Restructuring, reducing the elementary summer reading program, our suggestion would be to reduce that by half, but eliminate the program. So we're talking about eliminating the funding by half to utilize the additional $40,000 to design something different that meets the most, needs of the most at risk students who have previously been serviced by that program. We don't know what that is.
But that went back to the question I asked W earlier, which to explain and further out of it, that would be something in the regular academic year, likely?
Well.
Not definitely?
We don't know that. We just know that we would reduce it by half at this point.
Okay.
And take a look at what else could be designed, whether it was during the year or something in the summer, with not a lot of time to plan that or develop. or something in the summer, with not a lot of time to plan that or develop a program like that.
Sure.
So, I know, Karen, you mentioned that as an item of great concern to you. My suggestion would be, after I run through the rest of the items, let's go back to the ones that jump out, they choose the greatest concern, and talk about what you would suggest doing differently to essentially trade for that. The second administrative item that I mentioned is a high school AP position. We would suggest not making that reduction at this point, but scheduling that for 2021 or '21, '22. Again, a significant impact on students and the experience at the high school level. Not a reduction we'd like to make, but certainly a reduction that we should look at and we should schedule going forward if we can't make any other change or find other funding.
Could I ask, but also, you mentioned earlier, some reallocation that you mentioned, this area would be addressed also?
Well, so, right now, when you look at that family navigator position,
Right.
It is not a loss of an assistant principal entirely, but the person that we would right now schedule for moving into that position would essentially trade positions with a high school administrator, who would then become the middle school administrator. At the high school level, there would be less direct service as a high school assistant principal, because that person will pick up the duties of the family navigator.
Pick up the other.
So, in a sense, it is not the reduction of administrator, but it is the reduction of administrative capacity at that level.
Correct.
By taking on other duties previously would have been assigned to the family navigator.
Okay.
So we would evaluate the success of that model and the director of humanities position and determine administrative reduction in 2021 or '21, '22. We can count on right now $10,000 in additional retirement breakage with retirements that came after the proposed budget.
So that's just something that would not be replaced, then? We would take that?
Correct.
Got it.
The videographer position, we would suggest, and I spoke to the importance of this, without rehashing that, we would suggest not making that reduction at this point either. Also, the private parochial transportation, not making that reduction at this point. It would have to happen in a contingent budget, but we feel this is important for non-public students and families. Professional development, travel, and conference, we would suggest taking 36 of the $50,000. That would impact our summer professional development, our partnership with the New York City Public Schools, and a charge back to the Teacher Center grant as well. In continuing education, we would suggest making that reduction, but by $8,000, which would increase some fees in the continuing ed program. For clubs and activities, we would suggest the $15,000 reduction at the high school level. This will have an impact on kids involved in particular clubs. We would ask the high school to prioritize those, looking at having essentially the least impact possible, but there would certainly be an impact to students. The modified teams, we would not suggest making that reduction at this point, especially given the equity concerns and that discussion that we've had. Non-mandated transportation subversion, we would suggest making that reduction by $10,000 and essentially work with our families to understand the implications of that. We would not recommend making the extended studies reduction at this point. We would recommend a $15,000 reduction from the $83,000 budget for 9 through 12 summer school, which will eliminate some courses, but we would prioritize courses that will still get kids through an on-time graduation, particularly at the upper level, that the closest the kids are to graduation. We would recommend the AIM staff reduction by $10,000, which will reduce some of the course offering in the AIM program, but we feel we can still make that work. Foreign language interns, we would not suggest making that reduction at this point, providing essential support for the rural language program. The BHS clerical position, we would suggest making that reduction and not filling the position, that would not require laying somebody off, but rather not filling the position. The computer aid position as well, we believe that there's one, we know, there's one grade level now lacking in one-to-one devices, 12th graders. We will still be able to provide computer lab access, we'll just not do that with the same support from computer aid, and it will be less available than it would have otherwise been. We would recommend the charge back of the technical theater manager position to the summer program. That will be a cost to the program that then will be borne by families. We would recommend using a fee structure for the facility use, the gyms, grass fields, and rents of $10,000. We will be looking at other budget lines for about $12,000 in budget to actual savings. And we would recommend the substitute teacher coverage item, feeling as though we can reduce that line as well. To be under the cap, we would need to reduce $1,331,959. This list is $1,332,000. So that puts us just under the cap. I point out a couple of items here. First of all, and for those watching just up on the screen, I want to speak to these points. It's borrowing from other lines right now. It's this ethical decision around saying that there are funds available, but that there is a long-term impact, which is the point in not doing this in the first place, that those things will need to be funded.
We've only robbed Peter to pay Paul.
Yes, we robbed him twice. Correct. That is the reality. It is absolutely the reality, and it is dead serious that those will, will be cut. The problem is, there's this challenge perceptually, where people feel like, "Well, you said you'd cut these things, now you're not cutting all these things." And I'll go through the list of what we are cutting, it actually is significant. What we'd like to make clear to people is, there is, these will be cut, but there is this ethical and moral dilemma for all of you, that you could cut them now and say, "Fine, this is what you asked for." But when we know we could fund them at least for the year, even though that is not the best financial decision, which is not why we proposed it in the first place, it doesn't seem right to reduce that immediately if you can find a way to fund it, knowing you will have to make that decision next year and the year after, and that that's a fact. And, by the way, there still is a significant list of what's being reduced, which, again, we'll go through at the end of the conversation. Looking at programs that can be scheduled for future reduction, again, that also gives us the opportunity to plan those reductions. So to plan those now in a pretty short window presents a significant change, a significant change for staff members, who we do have an obligation to also. You know, with all of this, one thing that's gotten lost in the conversation is, or just not mentioned, is the unbelievable impact that the people are working. It is not a dispensable commodity. These are human beings with families and programs that, yes, our community members have families and have said, "We can't afford that." We're saying, "We hear you, and we will not propose that again." But let us make the reduction in a way that is reasonable and rational and supportive of everybody involved in the conversation as well. And the opportunity to plan programming for students in a way that is not as disruptive as announcing tomorrow that every one of those student programs is canceled, as you would in a contingency budget.
Do we know what the percentage would be under the cap, or is that not?
Well, it's, it's like 2.33.
This total amount is just under.
Yeah, okay, so something, yeah.
It is, it's not over the cap.
But it's under, it puts no star, it lists the rebate check, or any of those ramifications.
There will be an impact felt to the community, both in our customer service and in the student experience. The additional fees and program costs will impact community users' own. Again, if additional funding is not received, or something does not change dramatically, these programs will not be funded. We will need to go back to those items where we, right now, are able to say, "We won't purchase those, we will support a student program," but we will need to purchase whatever those things may be in future years, particularly the staffing for the full-day kindergarten. And really, this idea is a pragmatic approach. It caps immediate growth, so we're saying, "We're not going to grow the diversity equity position, we're not going to grow security staff as much as we think we should have. We're not going to grow additional program in terms of mental health." And we can refocus and have time to plan then, to mitigate any of the program and staff impact going forward. So some questions that might come up, and then after this, we'll go back to what other, what items do you want to revisit, are there changes you'd like to make? You know, what did you really cut then? So let's be clear, as we rattled off a list, it's professional development, instructional coaching, not all of it, but parts of it. The new funding for diversity equity, mental health, and security. Most of it for security, not all of it. Furniture, equipment, debt service, and full-day case set-asides are spending, all of which will need to be replenished. Administrative reorganization to assume the duties that were assigned to mental health and counseling, which will limit some of the assistant principal access at the high school level, but take over some of those administrative duties in the mental health area. The CPSC position, program assistance for athletics, elementary summer program, reduced high school summer program, a portion of clubs and activities, clerical and computer lab support at BHS, and a portion of the staffing for the AIM program. Another question that might come up, "Why didn't you just do this in the first place?" Because the short-term impact on service, and our continuing to improve and grow as an organization, is significant. Balanced with the long-term need to refund those areas that will result, now, we know those will result in significant program reductions, all we're saying is, we can use some funding to mitigate some of that impact immediately, knowing that we'll have to do that in the long term. And in terms of what is the long-term impact, we'll have to reduce programs further when those set-asides need to be refunded or replenished, and that the reductions in administrative and instructional staffing will be made in the 2021, '21, '22 budget if further efficiencies aren't found. Not likely, we constantly are looking for efficiencies, the point being, unless other programs change, disappear, or needs are different for students at that point, or additional resources such as state aid are not identified, they can be kept, many of these can be kept in this current year, only by using some of those set-asides. And the point was, we didn't do that in the first place because it now creates a funding cliff that will have to be addressed, and will, it will have to be addressed. The dilemma, of course, was in our internal discussions, will people see enough, or will they think, "Well, you could have just done that?" That is not where we're coming from. By the way, it'd be a whole lot easier not to have to answer that question and just make program reductions, and say, "Okay, well, this is what you asked for. We said this." And we always worry about our credibility in this discussion going forward. We're trying to say to peoples, we're having an honest, transparent conversation with you, that we can fund the program for this year, we can't fund it long-term. And that the reason why we didn't do that before is because we wanted to create funding and the ability to create, keep those programs going forward, which now we will not be able to do.
Well, Kevin, if I could add too, before we get into some question situations, I think what your, the clarity is, what leadership team has proposed at this point in time to us, you know, the question of why someone would ask, "Why didn't you do this in the first place?" Well, because it's fixing the problem in the very short term. It is getting a budget out that we can live with generally for our students. It's under the tax cap, the premise being, we hope that voters will approve with a 50% plus one margin. But it really does also set a course for us immediately over the next few years. We know right now that if this, we go forward with this budget the way that we, you've outlined it, we know what we're going to be dealing with for the next two to three years at a minimum, given major changes on the revenue side, we can talk about that too tonight, that we have to account for, those reductions in one way, shape, or form, moving forward, especially given the potential gaps that Lou had outlined earlier in his presentation. So that provides some clarity. But my point to the community would be, as we discuss this over the next week and a half or two weeks, if this, a form of this is our final, in that it was not a choice initially, because there, there's a situation here which will resolve, voting this year and approving it is not a one-time fix, boom, we're out of the woods. We have to deal with these issues as we move down the road. So, what I'm going to suggest, and I will leave it to you also, in the interest of time and in the interest of hearing, again, from our public, we may be here a long, a long time this evening, I would like to open it up to public comment or public question. At this point, let's hear what folks might have to say, and then let us have a broader discussion. Is that okay? Or not? It's up to you.
I just don't want to lose the one particular item that Karen mentioned about, about the summer reading program.
No, I'd like to hear what the priorities of the community members are.
That's great.
Let me weigh in, I think, on some of our discussion.
I won't forget about it, though.
All right, so, back to our original from the beginning, this is, this is a public comment period. We'll allow everyone here to comment at one time. If you have a question, you want to comment on anything you've heard so far, if it's a question we can answer, we'll answer it. If not, we're going to have to get back to you, as you can see, this is a work in process. I got to ask you to raise your hand, I'll ask you to come to the podium, name and address, and please keep your comments or question or statement to a three-minute period so that we can fit everybody in. So, who would like to speak before we ask? No one has anything? All right, Heather, would you like to come to the podium, please? And then, the hand from the back, thank you. Hand, I didn't mean head, I saw your head.
Hi there, I'm Heather Coyne, I live on Hollywood Avenue. Looking through all these, they're obviously, you know, rough, very rough cuts, it's a rough situation all around. I would just, I don't know how other people feel, but I'm wondering how the folks up here who are going to be making the decisions feel about the, about no reduction in the alternative, not the contingent, but no reduction in the private slash parochial transportation on non-school days. I guess just from a, my perspective, I'm looking going, now, granted, this won't affect, this particular item wouldn't affect my child, so I feel awkward speaking about it, but I just wonder how many, I don't know the numbers, how many kids, how many days of the year that is, and how much more we could do with $50,000 to save other programs, like summer programs, clubs, whatever. So, that's just my thought. Again, I don't know a lot about this, but maybe if there are even some way to split the difference, I don't know, I don't know how to do that, but that's just my personal opinion.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate that, and we'll try to weave that into our discussion. Yes, sir, in the back, you raise your hand.
Hey, good evening, folks. My name is Mike Diskin, I live on Fair Oaks. I haven't been to one of these meetings before, so.
We haven't had a meeting just like this before in 15 years, so you haven't missed anything.
For what it's worth, it's been informative. I thought that everyone was pretty transparent throughout the process. It's not an easy subject, but just listening to all the line items being listed, what exactly is $100,000 on furniture, and why does it seem like that occurs every single year? I grew up in a school where furniture was what it was, it was replaced what it needed to be. Overall, as I'm listening, there seems to be a lot of items here that if you just didn't buy them for a year or two. Why they'd have to be refunded later on, I don't understand. It just seems like you've got a budget, if you just started taking things that don't affect the classroom experience or the student experience at all, hard items like furniture, laptops for all students, you'd have a budget pretty easy and not increase our taxes at all, forget about the tax rate.
Is it helpful if we answer some of the questions?
In other words, I'm tired of you.
So, you know, I, I guess, and you've emailed too, and I know, I'd love to get together with you and talk about it, and in matter of fact, when you do, I'd love to walk you through some classrooms to show you. I saw that number, I remember when I was first a teacher and I saw like the classroom budget for furniture and could not believe the amount of money that's spent on that. The best way to explain is, it is not inexpensive. So, if you think of the number of pieces of furniture in a 3,600-student district in four buildings in every single classroom, that, you get to that number really fast. So you're right, how could you put it off for a year? That's exactly what we're saying that we'd like to do, is put those purchases off for a year and be able to fund other program through those purchases. The 21st century classroom purchasing is basically saying, instead of replacing old furniture with old furniture, so old furniture with, you know, big, heavy desks that has no flexibility, when the way we are teaching now and the way we interact with kids is for them to be able to move desks all over the place in different combinations, different types of groups, it requires a different type of purchase along the way. It's not just repairing an old desk, but thinking differently about the furniture we put in front of our kids, because we're teaching differently. But with the number of kids we have, you get to that number very fast, just to maintain the program that you're offering. I think a lot of kids with a tear in their pants and along the way, we'd talk to you about the quality of the furniture that's in some of our classrooms and the need for replacement for those, they simply wear out with the kind of use that they get.
All right, two more comments.
Yep.
There's been some minor talk about Albany mandated budget services. If Albany is doing us wrong, and we can all cry about that later, if there are mandated services that we have to provide that are not actually needed, why not just not spend the money on them and let Albany sue? I know it's been on the boards here and there, but if you really don't need the money, put it to what the community wants it to go to. That's number one. Number two, someone made mention of, people would actually have to, correct me if I'm wrong, but someone would have to actually justify their budget purchases. Shouldn't you just be on a zero-budget-based purchasing program in any event? If every year, everyone goes over their budget, sees what exactly they need, it's a fairly popular tool in business, we're spending everyone's dollars here, it just seems prudent to do that without just, you know... you know, here's whatever money you have, here's whatever money you have, do you really need it? And I just don't hear any of that going on here.
That's exactly what our budget process is every year. Every one of these people, when they submit all of their budget requests, they're all justified and worked through every single one of them.
There was specific language about they'd have to justify something as opposed to not justifying it, which I thought was off.
So, our equipment budgeting process is zero-based. So, every year, there's not a baseline allocation for our buildings or departments for budgets. Everyone has to submit what they are, and we go through a process as a leadership team to say, all right, what do we think we can include in the budget? That's different, that's looked at a different lens under an austerity budget where there's very strict parameters defined by the law. So, you'd have to make the argument that it's essential for program, to maintain program, it's essential for health and safety, or it's essential for the preservation of assets. For instance, one of our items was a lawnmower. We had a replacement, standard replacement plan of our lawnmowers, they were about $10,000 each. I said that, can you make the argument that that is essential for it? No, we'll keep replacing ours and replacing, maintaining ours, so that's something that will be deferred. At some point, that lawnmower will break down and we'll replace it. That's what we're talking about, is adopting a stricter parameter for every equipment line item using the state rules, if you will.
One more quick item. There was no mention whatsoever of cuts to administrative budgets, salaries, staff. There were some high school items, but that was about it. But up here in this building, there was no mention of any of those cuts at all.
Yep, that's correct. So, what our recommendation is, is going into next year, that we reassign duties through the reorganization of administrators essentially. So, taking some of the support right now that's afforded to the high school in terms of an assistant principal, putting that towards a position that would encompass this family navigator position, and it's a reorganization, but it is not cutting a person, funding part of the assistant director for humanities position in a grant, and knowing that high school assistant principal or director of humanities position, or both, will have to be reviewed in next budget year and the year after that. So, similar to the other programs that we're talking about and the reduction of staff, we're saying fund that right now, immediately, but that we would have the time to plan that differently over time and have to look at those positions, neither one of which we think are expendable, but we would certainly be reducing that before we'd reduce many more student programs.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. In the second row and then in the front row, yes. And then you, sir, next, thank you.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Villarreal, and I live on Willow Quest Drive. The slide that I have a lot of questions about and concerns about, and I'm thinking, Lou, you might be able to answer this, is the one that talks about the assumptions and the tax cap in revenues. And I'm looking into the future. Those gaps really concern me when we're looking at three, four, five, eight million-dollar gap. Is that, did I interpret that correctly?
If we're not taking corrective action each budget year. That's the compounding impact. So, that's not assuming we fix it each budget year and then it grows again, so in year five, it's 4.0, or, sorry, I can't see if, that number, thank you. Sorry, should've, I do have it up. Please hold. $8.6 million. So, that's the compounding impact of that.
So, I'm looking to the future going, we're in a bad situation this year. That scares me more than this year's budget when we're looking at those huge gaps.
So, what they're saying is, we have to have a plan each budget year to curb the growth of our spending based on the, or changes in the revenue assumptions. I mean, that's what we're being transparent about, is that we need to have a multi-year plan on how we're going to slow the growth of the spending, and that's got to be through interventions.
So, I guess, Mike, it's more of a comment that concerns me that as a district, we have, it looks like further reductions, potential reductions.
Yeah, so that is assuming none of what we're suggesting tonight. That's assuming no changes. So, when we say to you that we're making reductions tonight of $1.3 million to be under the cap, and then would make additional reductions in future years, that begins to close that gap. But you're absolutely right, that.
That's very scary to me.
And Yvonne, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. I said something earlier. Every district in New York State is in this situation. We are ahead of the curve.
Yes.
We're the leaders.
I understand. The district I work for has an $84 million gap.
But in New York State, and I don't want to really, I mean, everybody, part of our conversation over the last few weeks has been difficult. Some people have had some very specific comments about, you know, it's not, I'm trying to blame New York State. We're trying to paint the exact position that we're in in terms of where our revenue comes from. Because we are one of the lowest in terms of this percentage of financial aid, we are one of the leaders on this cliff that we're headed to, all right? So, that's why at the state governance level, they really have to fix how they provide revenue to districts to do the mandated programs that they require. And the, you know, everyone is squeezed because the tax cap legislation is here, what the state will give you is here, and the rest of it is in the middle that we have to figure out. And that's what we're working prudently on to figure out, taking into consideration that that may not anytime soon, orange bar, jump, okay? But this is the conundrum of New York State public education funding right now. Over the years, what's happened is everyone's surpluses, everyone's fund balances have gotten tighter and tighter and tighter, while state aid has not kept up with the cost to educate kids. It just hasn't.
And I don't like to be a Debbie Downer or have scare attacks, but that number is very frightening to me.
Yeah, no, it's not.
And as a community.
But I think if the state funded us, and I think I've heard Dr. McCollum say this, if the state funded us and our foundation aid and what we should get, we probably wouldn't even need to force a budget with a tax increase. Am I correct on that, or?
Well, depends.
Or it was.
It's almost difficult to even keep explaining this anymore. We have some ideas and thoughts that we'll be bringing to the community in the near future as far as what we believe might work with Albany, one of them being a floor for everybody, to try to keep it simple. But the point is, it is what it is. We're aware of it, we're working on it, but at the same time, we do have to keep our own house in order. We do have to approach this as if we will be in this situation from New York State. And so, that's why you see what you're seeing in that chart about potential areas of reduction over a two, three, four-year period to get us back to where we would have to be if it stays like that.
Thank you.
And we choose not to go out over the cap, attempt to do that again.
Well, I think it's a good time, I mean, it seems like the community is fired up about this, and there's a lot of momentum and advocacy to work toward helping fix that in Albany.
That's right. We expect the message, and hopefully that's the case, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you front.
My question was going to be about disparity that you just mentioned, so if you're not ready to talk about it now, then I probably don't need to ask it.
Mark, just the disparity in aid?
I mean, as far as a plan moving forward?
The fact that Brighton's changed compared to other districts. I think that's what you were just mentioning.
Well, Kevin can speak to it. From my standpoint and the board's standpoint, we, obviously, I mean, we worked in Rachel Remma when she spoke before about trying to start earlier, starting now. We can craft communication beginning now, and we have to do that. And we begun talking about, all right, how best might we get this really moved in Albany? The conundrum that we have, there's multiple aspects to this that we'll save for another time, because we will educate and we'll continue to talk about every detail. But until that governor's budget is issued in January, I know people find this hard to believe, until that's issued in January, we have no idea what that number will be, what things that have been repaired in the past disappeared, what new things are in there. It's a crazy way to run New York State, but that's the way it works here. And so, we can plan, and we are, we're jumping ahead on that, we are planning, and that's what this is all about. But planning for that revenue source is a bit of a shot in the dark, and we have to, and again, we're part of all of the 700 school districts in New York State that are all trying to fix this in a broad way, and then we have this individual situation that we need to try to get traction on and get some sort of a fix that we believe we can sell that will affect enough districts that politically people can get behind it, in a nutshell. More to come, but we will have to engage the community, and that is clear. Everyone who said that, everybody's message about that, we're going to need the entirety of the Brighton School District community to help us with that messaging, and we will, much more to come on that.
Mark, the very quick explanation is that a formula that the state agreed two years ago, said this is how money should be distributed, based on the number of kids you have, the number of kids who are English as new language learners, who are special education students, who receive free and reduced lunch, variety of statistics, that your data should yield you, and just round numbers, $60 million. So, they agreed to that, and they were rolling it out over a number of years. And as the state experienced financial difficulty, they had to slow the roll, so to speak. The problem was that they capped parts of the formula so that districts wouldn't grow too fast. So, arbitrarily, to make sure that particular district wouldn't shoot up and get a much higher percentage than their neighbors. The places where they put those caps on growth affected us disproportionately because our numbers changed differently than other people. Add to that, that's a practical solution that was agreed upon. The legislature, the senate, the assembly, and the governor agree to a budget, and that's entirely a political negotiation, not a practical one. And there's something called the shares concept, which is essentially a handshake agreement in Albany, it's not written in the law anywhere, that the money devoted to education and other programs will be divided up, and regionally, certain shares go to certain places. So, New York City represents 39% of the state, they'll get 39% of the money. Doesn't matter what the formula says. The formula might say they should get 42%, they're only going to get 39%. And every region in the state's going to get their share. So, politicians agree, they all have to come home with a certain amount of money and say, I'll agree to the shares because I want to make sure my community gets what they're entitled to. Not based on the formula, but based on the number of people in the community, based on the political weight, et cetera. So, the shares drove money to other places, and if Brighton all of a sudden had money coming to it that represented what the actual student need was, which is what the formula says, then this area's share of the money would go way up. And that's not acceptable to them and their political solution, so they artificially capped segments of the formula so that we wouldn't go up that much faster. That is not logical, that is not reasonable, that is not something that I can explain to people when they say to me, I don't get it, it's wrong. Yeah, you're damn right it's wrong, and I can't explain it any other way other than to tell you that's what they do. And there's nobody answering for that. Joe Robach's not here, Jamie Gomio's not here, and the governor's not here. And by the way, not heard from any one of the three, not that I expected the governor to call. But they are absent without leave on the issue and did nothing to change this in this year. Joe Morley, when he was the majority leader, was very successful in getting some of this fixed in that year with Joe Robach. They did, it was a million-dollar fix at that point that went into our base. But the very language they used to change the way the money was being distributed, which drove more money to us, was eliminated by the governor and his proposal this year, completely eliminated so that we wouldn't get treated differently based on our numbers, essentially starting from scratch. The million dollars didn't go anywhere, that was still there, thanks to Fight for Brighton and the work that was done in this community and those two legislators, that money is still there, but our numbers have continued to change, our numbers have continued to grow. So, our aid increase this year was significant. 1.4 million was the total that should have gone up, is that correct, Lou? And we received $250,000. So, the gap has just grown, meaning that we are only getting 50% of the aid, and it's a lost conversation. There is no interest in helping one of 700 districts in this conversation, albeit despite the efforts of Fight for Brighton this year, many of our community members have seen done by many people at this table in offices of legislators with aids constantly saying, this is not right. And them saying, yeah, you know what, that doesn't make a lot of sense, you're right, you should get a lot more than 50%. Pittsburgh gets over 60, Penfield 70. If we received just the money that Pittsburgh had, we would have been under the cap and not having this conversation. And the money that Penfield received, we'd be able to reduce your taxes.
Exactly.
Well, we would. Or the $8 million gap between the 16 that we are due. So, I recognize the frustration of community members saying, we're blaming our Albany. I don't know how to better explain the fact that you, as taxpayers, are getting short-changed. So, to the question that people have asked about why not sue the state, we've been told over and over again by attorneys that, one, we have a hard time showing that students have been hurt here when they're performing at the highest levels that they ever have been, number one. However, taxpayers have been hurt, and taxpayers should be the litigants, saying, we are being hurt as a community. So, there are a group of attorneys that have been talking to us who are taxpayers in this community, who are parents in this community, saying enough is enough, and they would like to take up that cost. We are fully supportive of that and are going to pursue that pretty vigorously. Unfortunately, that type of litigation takes a long time and is costly. I do think, though, it is now worth, you know, from a litigation standpoint, asking that question very directly of legislators. They're not doing anything else. And I don't mean to be so coarse about it, but that is the reality, and that's not an excuse, that is what the reality is. Those numbers don't lie, that is the truth.
Yes. You want to come up? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natalie Pinkus, I live on Rensselaer Drive. First of all, I'm devastated by even hearing this, this sort of redo on the budget, because as some of you know, I moved from another district not too far away two years ago, and was amazed by some of the programs that this district has. The fact that students are learning language in sixth grade, foreign language in sixth grade, that they're doing music in fourth, and let me tell you, the way that you do instrumental music here is very different than in other places. And it's heartbreaking to hear that those programs may go away, probably will go away, because it's something that makes this district really special. And I don't think everyone realizes who voted no. I don't think they realize what's going to happen with those, and what it's going to mean for the younger child in a family that finds out they can't learn the language that their sibling is learning in sixth grade, or that they can't have, you know, learn the flute in fourth grade like their sibling did. So, that's, to me, that's really devastating, and it's one of the things that I think makes this district amazing. I'm also concerned about some of the, some of the decreases that you're talking about. By getting rid of some of these positions, it sounds like there's a potential for staff burnout because you're going to be making some staff doing more, you know, saying, oh, let's get rid of an assistant principal. They do an amazing job, and the reason why there are four assistant principals is so that there is enough in the high school, so there is enough time, there are enough people to deal with all the students. There are lots of issues, whether it's disciplinary, whether it's mental health issues, whether it's trying to make sure that the student can handle all their academics. To get rid of one of them affects both that administrator who's now going to be doing other work, that's going to be piled up with more work and probably burnt out, being paid the same amount, and it's also going to dramatically affect those students. That goes to the student, to the mental health services as well. I'm really concerned about that. When we're seeing more and more, just in this week, in this greater Monroe County area, actually, not Monroe County, greater Rochester area, Genesee Valley area, of suicides in high schools that have been taking place, and we're talking about decreasing staffing, it's unconscionable. And I understand that this is a high burden for a lot of people to go over that tax cap, but there was a reason, because this community was talking about diversity and equity, was talking about mental health issues, was talking about substance abuse. All of these things are so vital, and now we're talking about cutting staff that could otherwise help. And it's just, I'm really just so frustrated that this is happening, and it's just, all this sounds like it's going to happen, is that down, we're just kicking the can down the road for even worse problems later, and potentially having to ask for an override again at some point. So, that's just my two cents, and I just, I hope that we can figure this out.
Thanks, Natalie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your feedback, we appreciate that. Yes, Rachel?
I'm fine.
And you, I'm sorry, I didn't see her, next.
No, I don't.
So, I'm Rachel Remly, I live on Fernborough Road. I wanted to say two things. One is that even under the, you know, lower-level reductions for the budget that would bring us under the tax cap, there's a lot of cuts to programs that support students at risk. So, I can speak that I think there will be a disproportionate impact on special ed, that Paul DeStefano position, CPSE. My son was expelled from multiple preschools and needed Paul to advocate, because I will just say, when CPSE meets, it's half the district and half the county, and the county wants to keep those costs very low. And the county wants to keep those costs very low, and the district is at the position of advocating for our students to get what they need, and if you don't have a very experienced person in that position, the county will get its way, and our students will not get what they need. And I know because I've been through that process. You're talking about reductions to summer school, to credit recovery. I think these are going to really hurt graduation rates and also really hurt students, but we are where we are. So that's one comment. The other is that I think people need to understand that even with a very successful lobbying strategy in Albany next year, we are very likely to still see these cuts to fourth grade instrumental music, to sixth grade foreign language, to whatever. The things that are listed here as, "We can keep these for a year and we're going to reduce them," that's even if we get more money from Albany, based on the way that I see what state budgets look like. The amount of additional money we would need to go get from Albany, given how things have gone for us with political clout, you should expect that these are reductions we will see even if we go get more money. So just be aware that, you know, it is a one-year reprieve, it is not a like, "We're going to get this reprieve and then we'll go do really well in Albany and we won't have to make that cut next year. We're going to have a one-year reprieve, and then we need to go get a whole lot more money from Albany, and hopefully we won't have to make more cuts on top of that." It's possible we might save a program or two, but it's going to be really rough. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moran or Claire, one of you, both of you?
I'm Moran McDade Clay from Eastland Avenue, and I wanted to say one thing, which is that specifically related to legislation and the changes that were made. I really do think that part of the credit to the governor's office underwriting what we did was that Lou's analysis initially, and really the district's analysis in looking at where we were, was very progressive and actually really groundbreaking for a lot of other districts to really look at. So it's something to think about that we've kind of started, begun the tidal wave there, I think, in terms of looking at funding across the state. I appreciate the list, I have a couple of questions about the list of cuts, and I just have perspectives that I think I want to offer. Working with Rachel, with Fight for Brighton, I certainly think that I agree with her about some of the realities of fourth grade instrumental music, the foreign language and other things, not happy about that, but I think we should be thinking that way. But my bigger question across this was really, and we did touch on it in some points, but I didn't hear it consistently. I think when we're really trying to communicate to the community, I need to know how many. Like, at one point Nate mentioned, you know, it's going to be three modified teams, I think that's really important. Now, that could be a basketball team, and it could be a soccer team. Basketball team's like 15 kids, soccer team might be 25, but, you know, really understanding the total impact to kids is something that I, and I just, I had questions kind of down the list, how many, how many, how many. I'm interested in that with the AIM program. I'm also very interested in that they mentioned the 100 kids for summer school. And the first thing that kind of came to my mind between AIM and the high school items was specifically the blue ribbon status, and really that kind of introspective look that the high school took to look at their graduation rates, at their graduation rates for a wide range of students and diverse student population, and how, you know, some of these cuts really are directly linked to some of the highest kind of excelling opportunities that the high school has created for, not only its students, but for the staff to really evaluate themselves. So I want, I think, I think people should really think about digging deeper a little bit on some of that, but I also would say overwhelmingly, I just, I'd kind of like to know how many. I'm a very big fan of the track program, and it serves 175 kids in the high school. The idea, and the idea that there might not be enough assistant coaches for that, I think it's a very positive thing. On the other hand, my bigger question too is related to the clubs. I don't know how many, what a stipend is for a club, how many clubs we're talking about and how many kids we're talking about, and I think those are numbers that I really want to know, not even if my kids are in them. It's about making those decisions about where we think those cuts will be. I'm just thinking generally more, a few more specifics on those would be really helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Claire, did you have something?
Hi, I'm Claire McLaughlin, I'm, I live on Turnabout Lane. I just want to thank all of you in the room here, I'm going to try not to get emotional. Oh dear. This was a really important thing for you all to do tonight, I really appreciate it. It gives a transparency, I think, for the community to understand the specifics. It's easy to say, "Cut waste," and to see what that would actually look like to meet the numbers that we're talking about is essential. As somebody who has followed the budget process for about a decade, I can say that I have seen through the recession and until now, every year you all are saying, "We have to make cuts. Where can we make them, away from how they'll affect children?" And the experience that my children have had, the kids now are not getting because there are field trips that don't happen and classes that are not being held and other things like that. But I've seen you try to really preserve what's most important for kids and to create new programs that are going to serve the needs of the most at-risk kids, and it's really wonderful. And to see this list tonight of what's being considered is heartbreaking, and I feel like we have this flagship district that is being systematically dismantled by the state because of its low funding. And I'm sorry that we're in this situation, I understand there's a limit to what people can afford, and I would hate for us to lose these programs that were put in place for really good reasons and really thoughtfully. So thanks to all of you for all the work that you do.
Thank you very much, Claire. And again, thank you, for those that don't know, Rachel and Claire, Moran, Corde, the Fight for Brighton effort over the last few years, and we appreciate your support in working together with all of us and trying to rally the folks. So thank you, and thanks for coming tonight. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we move on to some more conversation up here? Okay, thank you, folks, very much for attending tonight, and you're welcome to stay as long as we're here, so thank you very much. At this point, then, I think we should, board members specifically, talk a little bit about where we are, specific to the alternative budget option under the cap as sort of outlined by Kevin and leadership team. Comments, questions, further information that you'd like to see or hear or discuss further, or, you know. One thing I will remind the audience, whether they be watching now or in the future or here tonight, the role of a board of education, which is, I guess, one of those things that the community doesn't always entirely understand, but a board of education is a body of seven. We are not charged by law or regulation with making decisions on the day-to-day operation of the school. Therefore, it's really not the board's role, any board of education's role, to really go line by line and very specifically discuss an individual or, you know, specific number. That is really up to the professionals in this room who are educated and have the experience to make the decisions that are in the best interest of all Brighton families and students. But our role is to make sure we understand everything that's been presented tonight, ask those questions that sort of pique our interest, or some of those that concern us, to make sure that when we do get to a point, which we believe will be Thursday night at a 7:00 PM board meeting, to approve a budget, that we are doing it with all due diligence and properly. So to that regard, anybody who has a question or a comment or wants something further on any of these items, or a discussion about some of these items, let's go ahead and do that.
I mean, it's painful all the way around, but I think what Kevin and the administration has proposed is reasonable. Some of our, my colleagues may have other questions that they want to ask, but I think we should try to move ahead. My opinion.
Anybody?
I would just say there's pain no matter what we do. There's pain with the tax increase, and there's pain with cuts. And the feedback we got and the voting that took place, to your point, Kevin, is good an example of our democracy as it is, understanding the supermajority versus not. So we are incapable of creating a budget that will make everybody happy and that will not hurt. Anything we do will hurt. I appreciate the leaders to my left and the leaders across the table here and the hard choices they had to make in looking at opportunities. But I'm very open to discussion on a particular item, trade it for a particular item, I think that's fine, but this is what we have to do. And so we just all have to be honest with each other on both sides or all sides of this discussion. There are no easy answers. I'm greatly chagrined, I'm obviously involved with Lou on the building projects, I'm greatly concerned about pushing stuff out a year and the things around that, and how we structure debt and things like that, the work will get done, schools will be in better shape than when we started. But that's a concern to me, but I understand that's, those are big chunks that will help us get to this sort of under the cap space.
I agree, okay. Anybody?
I continue to be gravely concerned that some of these cuts do affect our most vulnerable students in the AIM program, the CPSE program and in the elementary summer program. And I know that when we talk about numbers of students overall, that that's likely a smaller group than others who would be affected. I would be willing to trade some of these budget items to make sure that we can hit, we can continue to serve this group, right? If I think about, when I think about my participation in the graduation rate committee about a decade ago, we talked about students who didn't graduate, and folks around the table said, you know, there were times when we could identify that student as early as kindergarten, that this was a student at risk possibly for that down the road, and I can't see that these programs don't help to rectify that, right? We can help change fate. I can't, I can't in good faith recommend eliminating some of those.
Do you have suggestions as to?
All right, I'll be the unpopular person to start that off. My high school electives, that's $60,000. The sum total of these programs are $72,000. I've got two high school students, they'll lose, they could lose out. You know, I know my own daughter wants to take a lot of singleton classes, but I would easily trade those.
I guess also.
How much, if you look at single grade level class size issues, what are your feelings on class sizes different places? Because high school can't get that opportunity back.
In terms of the electives?
No, elementary level class size. What, like in your head, what could you live with?
What could I live with kindergarten at 19 to 20? I couldn't live with one and two at 25 or 26 or any of our three five classrooms. That's insane. But my kids were in kindergarten classrooms that had 18, 19 students. Those were, those weren't, those are positive experiences.
The one thing I would add, and I'm not trying to change Karen's words, but I would offer.
And I also understand that I'm one of seven, that's one opinion.
Right. But I think you're raising things that, I mean, I share a number of concerns. I share some of the concerns expressed from the podium tonight, that whenever, I mean, none of this is great. I mean, I, the first thing I would say as board president is, I thank all of the professionals in this room who've worked so hard since last Tuesday night at 10 o'clock. Let's like Kevin, and you haven't slept much, we've met constantly, the group has worked diligently on this through the holiday weekend, and it's our job. And we'll go ahead and we'll put forward a budget that will work, that we hopefully will get passed, and we'll continue to work on the work. But what I am personally strikes me when I listen to those discussions about, it was described as our most vulnerable, those areas of mental health or support structures for kids who are not quite at the level they need to be, whether it be the summer reading or AIM or credit recovery, the summer school program.
I didn't even factor summer.
Where it just seems like we've made such progress moving up that slope, I hate to see us backslide in ways that we know will affect grad rate, but not only that, it'll affect quality of life for kids and their families. So not that I'm saying I would trade, I guess what I'm saying, Karen, is we're asking, I think, as a board, to you as professionals, do you think we can work around some of these in a way that maybe we haven't gotten into the details around tonight? Is there a way to mitigate, you know, the AIM change? You know, I think my impression earlier in the, in the process, when we first put agenda meeting together, Kevin, you were floating with some thoughts, that the AIM had a workaround to it that we felt pretty comfortable with overall, wouldn't be perfect, but that we could live with it. Is that, do you think that's the summer reading program, the summer high school, summer program with the cuts because it's still going to be there but it's going to be reduced? Can we get those kids that are most vulnerable? I'm not asking you to answer that in the next 10 minutes, but I'm saying those are the type of things I think that we're expressing. The family navigator, I would like to go forward with that, but I can understand that we can try to make that work in a way that our people are great at what they do. We have to remember we have great people doing great work every single day. And unfortunately, we're going to ask those great people to do a little bit more for a year at least coming forward. I guess that's where.
Well, let me answer it this way. The point of this was to have exactly this discussion.
Right.
So let's keep doing that, because then the plan was to recess and for us to go back and look at the feedback you're giving us, the feedback that all of you gave us, and the feedback that the seven of you elected to represent people's interests give us. Yes, the answer is, we debated all of these items and looked carefully at them and came to with what we thought had the least impact. However, that's in a vacuum, that's in us looking at it and asking other people but needing your feedback. The beauty of this is getting feedback from the community and from all of you to then say, "Okay, let's revisit that item," and ultimately be guided by that feedback. So can these be looked at differently? They can. And so let's talk through those, and then we'll take the recess, we'll go back and look at them and talk about what we know to be some of the impact, go back through our notes, go back through the discussions that we've had, and then come back to you later tonight. And we have to do it tonight, because we have to put a proposal to the governor Thursday. But one other point I want to make, and then I can tell you when I say something, but we can make some of those changes now, just recognize that if we change it for this year, that's a one-year solution. Because yes, we can have a program and say, "Okay, we'll trade it for this," but then going into the next year, it likely will still end up being reduced. So to the point of the underlying theory that we've laid out in terms of staving off a reduction for one year by using other funding, this is in line with that. This is saying the same thing. This is saying, "Let's, for this year, prioritize this over this, and then come back and revisit it a year from now." And that's fine. I mean, that, I think that's good feedback for us.
For me, for the elementary summer program, that makes some sense because we have, this is the end of the year, we have students likely identified for that program, and we're talking about cutting that program for this summer, right, in July.
The new year starts July 1.
And so if we've talked about making these decisions such that we can rationally plan, we, if we keep the program this summer, for me, that makes sense because then we can rationally plan for those students who wouldn't have the program in the summer of 2020, right? But I have some questions about summer school. I know that there are some students who take summer school classes, say, to get ahead in math. They might take Algebra II so that they can go into pre-calculus year earlier than, right? So we have some students who double advance that way through taking.
I don't think anymore.
We don't do that anymore?
I don't think so.
It's all credit recovery.
So the only students in summer school are credit recovery options, they're not students looking to get a better grade on their regents, they're not students looking to advance in their course.
Anybody can come and retake their regents exam. We have very few, probably less than three who would come and retake a course to get a different grade.
A different grade, okay.
As we try to save all the spaces for kids who've actually failed the course so they can come into summer school and not be behind when they start the next year. And one of the big things we've seen is, if you come into your sophomore, junior, or senior year behind in credits, that's going to be a big indication that you won't graduate on time. So a lot of remedial and credit recovery options to get them back in a grade level by the time they start that next year. That's, you know, those are the courses.
And if somebody has been in a class to raise their grade, it is only because that class was already running and there was an availability. Generally, it doesn't happen.
Do we, is it a per-student cost, or is it per-course cost?
It's a per-course. It's a per-course cost, and the courses chosen would be those least impactful to kids in graduation at this point, or with already low registration numbers.
I just want to jump in, Karen. What you may be thinking about is the state affords or allows for what they call credit by exam, and so that's completely outside of the summer school program.
And they may have taken the exam in order to.
The one thing too I wanted to frame is I think, I think we are in consensus, the group is consensus tonight, that this option that we're pursuing, a budget put forth on June 18th that meets the tax cap, is where we want to go. So the macro is, we're on that page.
Is that, I'm assuming?
Right. I mean, that's what we expect. I think we're not going to a contingent, we don't intend quite clear to go out over the cap again in this current environment, so that we, I think what we're giving guidance is we need to make this work at the bottom-line numbers, I guess, that we've brought forth. Christina, I wanted to make sure you're patiently sitting there at your laptop and listening. Did you have anything that you wanted to offer or weigh in on at this point?
I was thinking, I'm a little concerned about, well, I guess I appreciate that we're not making cuts to some of these programs, but I am a little concerned about what the long-term plan is for them, that they're not reduced in the next couple of years, but, you know, what kind of plan we're making in terms of maybe dismantling them. Am I being too pessimistic, but that's what it kind of seems like the long-term plan might be. So I am concerned about that. I was also thinking, are there programs in which we could assist the budget in some kind of grant program, but then again, we need administrators to write those grants to get those funds? So, you know, I don't know how feasible that is in terms of helping the cost to some of these reductions.
So we actually often employ a grant writer to assist us in that process. We rarely, if ever, qualify under many of the parameters around grant funding. The other difficulty is when we develop a program based only on grant funding, that's a one-time revenue that could disappear very quickly. So we often are actually trying to move positions out of grant funding and into the general fund, but certainly something that we're always looking to do. I don't, it sounds like we don't, we're not interested in that. It's just usually not a solution for us at this level and with our demographic population. I think the answer to your other question is, you're correct. We will be reducing those programs. Essentially, that's the decision that's been made by the community, and we will have to do that. The question is when, and if not now, when? And certainly, if they can be designed differently or revised over time, looked at differently, that was part of the idea behind the reduction in the summer program and keeping $40,000 in the program was, you know, can it be offered in a different way? You know, we talked today about a mobile opportunity with the mini-buses that were purchased last year for staffers to actually be able to go out to particular areas in the community with our most at-risk students and in areas where students could take advantage of a summer reading program where they live, you know, in neighborhoods. I will say, and it should be publicly known, that we've made efforts to do that and received zero help from some of our local apartment complexes and areas where the owners have refused to allow us to pursue that programming. So certainly, the community should know that those local complexes have had zero interest in assisting with that, although we would like to continue to pursue that and hope that that's an opportunity. But yes, that would be an example of ways we've said, okay, how can we look at that differently? What are ways we can pursue that program over time in a different way, knowing though that we will have reductions, that that's the choice at this point?
So Heather asked a question about the private pro-fuel transportation on our school days. Is the 50,000 number a solid number, or is that what we're?
Meaning what? I mean, that's the cost that we estimate to be. We can get you the number of days that the difference is and the number of kids that that impacts, but that is the cost.
One thing with that, costs are just, so that's our cost in year one. In year two, we would see approximately 60% of that come back in transportation aid, so the net impact on the local levy is the 40%. So we'd see a revenue decrease. We've advocated, as business officials, we've advocated for them to match revenues and expenses to get more incentive, so you're not making a cut in one year and then have a, you can't take the full value of it because you have to have the net levy impact, otherwise it doesn't meet the objective. And this is with reimbursable aids, they don't match revenues and expenses. So we'd see one savings this year, and then we have a revenue shortfall next year.
So in other words, the cost is, the true cost ends up being $20,000?
And for me, I don't want to see it go away, because for many people who pay taxes in this district, this is the only service they get, because their kids are going to different schools. It's their choice. So I'm not, you know, for $20,000, probably, I'm not certain that that's a wise move.
You know, one other thing I wanted to bring up while we're having this conversation, and this really goes to maybe a couple of the questions that were asked tonight, but it goes to questions that were asked during the budget season and a number of things that were emailed to us, sent to us, posted online. One of the things I think that the Brighton community needs to be better aware of, and we need to do a better job of talking about it, is the administrative burden, if you will, that the Brighton School District has is among the lowest in Monroe County, and it's among the lowest across New York State for districts our size in our category. When I joined the board, there were four assistant superintendents. There are two. We have, under Kevin's leadership, 10 years now, prudently looked at the entirety of administrative function, if you will. And if someone leaves or retires, or a job is no longer required, we have looked at it each and every time to see, can it be done differently? Can it be remade? Can it be reinvented to get more return on your dollar, if you will? We have veteran, experienced leaders in this district. They are among the best in the state and the best in the country. Without them, we would be in much more dire straits than we are right now. That is not a burden on this district above and beyond any other district. As a matter of fact, we are an advantage in this district with what we spend on the administrative side. Not that we shouldn't constantly and always look at it like we do everything, but some of the personal attacks on individuals that run this district and spend 24/7 on it, and some of the comments made and just totally misinformed, false information about a variety of things with regard to compensations and allowances for things have really been, you know, off the rails and uncalled for and really unprofessional and inappropriate. So I did want to make that statement tonight to folks. This board pays attention to that. We pay attention to it multiple times during the year when we run evaluations of Dr. McGowan, and we discuss the entirety of our administrative team. And we are in a tremendous position in this district, and we continue to hope that that is the case. But I just wanted to make sure that we made some clarification to the group this evening on that.
And Mark, when I joined the board, there were more administrators.
Oh, here he goes.
And they were reduced.
Correct.
By each superintendent that I've worked under or had the pleasure to work under.
In the words of a former board member of ours who's still a community member, "We prune to grow at any opportunity that we can." So that's certainly the case in that regard.
Thank you.
Anything further from any of the board members? Anything further we want to comment on right now?
I want to just ask a question.
Sure.
Of my colleagues here. Is there a need to recess?
Well, I'm just going to ask, if Kevin, do you, do you want to get together with Lou, Debbie? Do you want to work on some things and reconvene, take sure of break?
I hate to keep people under, we need to.
There's no need to go to an executive session to discuss a specific individual, would you say, at this point?
I don't believe so.
All right, then what we'll do, I guess I'll ask for a motion to recess, and we will reconvene in.
I wouldn't expect to need more than 20 minutes. We'll come back down sooner if needed, and if we need more time, we'll let you know.
All right, a motion, please, to recess for approximately 20 minutes, and we'll reconvene.
So moved.
Seconded by Marv, moved by Marv. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll take a short recess, folks. Thank you. Dr. McGowan, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So I appreciate the feedback and the discussion, and we went back in and looked at some of those items based on, again, your feedback and some things that we think we could do. I want to emphasize again the strategy of can do it now, but there will be a cliff to the funding. And so along those lines, we'd like to propose a few different changes to what we mentioned. One, the Family Navigator program, we would keep the current funding, but use the IDA grant to do that, the IDAB grant to do that. We'll have to prioritize other items within that grant, but we typically, as I mentioned before, that strategy of not putting staffing into grant funding. But we will do that in this case, and again, then there will be a cliff going into next year. That will allow, we will go ahead with the administrative restructuring at the same time. That will allow us the year to evaluate how that works and the interplay between restructuring that position and support for the mental health needs of our kids at the current staffing level, so not expanding that, other than through a different administrative approach to that, number one. The second item would be, we will look at a K5 reduction in staff for class size. It would likely be at the kindergarten level, as we've talked about that. It seems to be the place that it makes the most sense. However, we're going to double-check our staffing projections and make sure that that is the right place and makes the most sense. But there will be one reduction at the K5 level to do that. That does not actually reduce a current teacher, because there are, there still was one vacancy to fill. Now, you know, that was a vacancy at the elementary level that we would have been able to fill, especially using new hiring practices going into this year. We just won't be able to do that then. We won't be hiring at all. Between movements in that group, one of the instructional coach positions will go back into a teaching position. One will be this reduction. We had already reduced two in the budget process, and so that will fill out the whole group. And then the other restoration, because of that change, we'll be able to restore the funding for the summer review program in French Row. Again, that will be the cliff. We will be able to fund that for a year, reevaluate, perhaps plan for a different type of program, and look for a way to do that long-term in a different way. But it gives us the year to do that. It gives us time, especially when adults are committed to it and kids have been identified, to think about that program going forward. The point to reduction AIM, we are going to stay with that reduction. The reason being, it has very little impact, as we explored that with high school leadership, very little impact on student choice in the program and is a reduction that we can make. Number one. Number two, the other reduction in the high school summer program, summer school program, we're going to keep that reduction, and that's because those courses were specifically identified as having very low enrollment and being an opportunity for an efficiency that will not impact graduation for kids with those specific courses, which is why those were the ones that were identified and likely would have been reduced going forward. This gives us the opportunity to do that. But often, when we get close to the time when summer school is to begin, we look at whether courses can run or not based on enrollment, and that's a reduction area. So AIM and the high school, the summer school program will have very little impact on students, so we'll stay with those. I think that's important. But the French Row program would be restored in the proposal. A reduction in the elementary staffing for class size, likely in kindergarten, but we'll relook at that, will be made, and we will shift funding through the grant, the IDAB grant, for the Family Navigator contract that we currently have in place. The way the service gets expanded is through the administrative restructuring, but it gives us time to study that and explore the impact, especially in light of having a conversation over reduction of an administrative position going into the next budget process. Any question on any of those? Any other feedback or changes? Because we'll develop the proposal now between now and Thursday, make it to you on Thursday. I think we've addressed each of the items that you've brought up to us. Any of the other feedback or the items that did come up, we talked through those, we kept notes, and for, you know, a variety of reasons relative to being able to still administer the program the way we think we should, we would like to maintain any of those proposed reductions. Again, any other changes required for the reductions in another area?
One requires adjustment to another. One thing I would remind the board is, or advise the board, if you go home this evening, everyone, and think about this further, and there's something that you believe we've missed, Julianne and I have an agenda meeting with Kevin tomorrow, and send us a note, and we can bring that up for further conversation. Keeping in mind that Thursday night, what really we'll be doing is approving a spending plan with a total number and a projected number to meet the cap. And while we've fleshed out and worked through all of these items that we've talked about, we would anticipate that due to needs and changes and things that occur, should we approve that budget Thursday night, pass that budget on the 18th, that always some adjustments get made before the new fiscal year, the new school year starts on July 1st anyway. And that's certainly your priority of the group as leaders to make that work in the long run, so.
Additionally, I promised the community an email tonight. I will send that with a bulleted list of things we talked about tonight as potential areas for a reduction, proposals to be made on Thursday, bless you, and mentioning the difference between that and a contingent budget in as much detail as I can, making an effective piece of communication without it being a three-page communication, because to encapsulate tonight would be difficult to do that. However, going forward after the proposal, we would provide the community with a significant amount of detail. The presentation given tonight with some minor adjustments will be attached to that email, along with the thought exchange feedback as well, in order to give our community the full perspective on our discussion this evening.
And again, you'll remind and we'll remind that, so Thursday, the 30th, we will meet at 7:00 PM with the intention being, at this point, to approve this budget. But during the day, both at, what time? 10:00 AM and at 5:00 PM on Thursday, we will hold a budget open house here in this room, in the boardroom. Any members of the community that want to come, ask more questions, ask for further detail, we will have that opportunity from those two times that we've listed, 10 to 11 and 5 to 6.
Are we still going to have an executive session at 6:00?
Well, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
It would be anticipated.
Okay.
Any further comments, questions in the board?
I just want to thank everybody, all the administrators, Kevin, Lou, and Debbie, and everybody else that was here, because I think this is just, it's been a tough, tough thing, and I think we've made some pretty good decisions.
I would agree. I think I thank all of you, and I know how everyone's worked really literally since Tuesday night, and we appreciate it, but even more so, we're as a team moving forward in some difficult times, and we will do it as a team, and we'll work together, and we'll make this work in the best interest of Brighton families and move forward and all the other ways that we've talked about that we've yet to have explained to the public and work forward on the revenue side. But thank you all very much. We do appreciate that.
Thanks, guys.
Anything else, then, from your standpoint? Then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.